There are going to be a lot of possessions sort of left over. Are they going to storage or you want them? Do you really provide that kind of service too?
I do, and again, as much as possible, I want to have the senior involved in those decisions. But there are usually important pieces of furniture or photos that they really want to make sure get passed on and cared for to their family members. And so I have a process of, you know, labeling different pieces within the household.
Stickers on the bottom.
Love the posters. So through that process, we identify those particular kind of family belongings and then others, as you said, that may go to a charitable organization and be able to be let go because there isn't that same value placed on it. And then finally, there's, again, sometimes they just can't make a decision about a particular item, and if that's the case, I think, get a storage unit. It's going to cost you money every time, but that may be what's going to give them the peace of mind to be able to just have that and know they can make a decision later.
Yeah, and I always tell people, since they have now identified me as part of this, you know, support service for aging people, things can change in a minute. You can think you've made the most rational choice, you've researched it carefully, and Auntie Ruth falls and breaks her hip. Now what? Now the facility you thought you had is not really appropriate to someone who's going to be in rehabilitation. It's like, oh my god.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, it's just that level of kind of awareness and education that's needed out in the public to help people, and especially family caregivers, know what's the process when something like that happens. Because I think, you know, probably the majority of the public doesn't realize, well, they're going to go to a convalescence or rehab facility for anywhere from, you know, one to two to four weeks, and then they're going to have to get discharged to go somewhere.
Catherine, it's time to take a short break, and when we return, we will continue our discussion on finding affordable and appropriate senior housing with our special guest, Catherine Fritz. Please stay tuned, we'll be right back.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back. Get the message, be prepared.
As kids, it's really important that we learn the proper way to cross these streets. First, you have to stop at the curb, then look both ways to make sure there are no cars. If you see one, wait for it to pass, and when it's clear, you can cross. As kids, sometimes you have to say an example. Look both ways before you cross, cars can't see you.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, taking the stress out of transitioning to a new home. Our guest, Catherine Fritz of Together in Transition. Now Catherine, I want to make sure, I know there are people sitting out there going, where was she five years ago? Or, I have decisions to make. How do people get in contact with you?
Well, I have the website and a number here locally in Los Angeles.
You better.
Absolutely, I'd love to hear from people and help them get started and connected with the right resources. My website is www.tgetherintransition.com.
Right, all one word, one together, and it's dot com?
Exactly.
Okay, togetherintransitions.com, and a phone number? Okay, one more time. What, okay. I have to ask, can people call you too late when they're too far down the road? Or, I mean, have you encountered that situation?
No, in fact, unfortunately, that's usually when I am called.
Oh geez.
I'll just give you a quick example. You know, for me, when I say this is a process, I'm really being sincere about that because there's different needs for timing and acceptance of, you know, moving, making a big transition like this by the seniors, a lot of times, I initiate a conversation with the family and the senior, but like I said, they may not be ready to make that move. But we've established a relationship, and so I check in with them every once in a while. But unfortunately, a situation that happened recently is, I got a phone call from the son saying the mom was now in the hospital after having broken her hip, and they were going to need to find a facility for both her and her husband in the next couple of weeks. And when that happens, I just have to go into fast gear, you know, getting all those information regarding the criteria and things that they're going to need to work within and services they'll need, and just present the best that I can for them at that particular time.
I understand. I know one thing that became an issue. Now, I'm a Southern California boy, so anything within five hours by car is my backyard. Until we had these care issues in facilities. Boy, it better be close. You can't be spending an hour as often as you may have to go visit your loved ones, you know, going in the middle of traffic because they've called you and your loved one's out of meds.
Absolutely, I think that is one of the most important things that they only need to take into account. On one hand, if there's a level of independence and mobility, maybe there isn't such a high need to have them as close by at the beginning part of a residential transition. But if you're really wanting to try to make one transition for this family member for the rest of their life, then it really is important to take the time to understand where are the facilities within, you know, identifying, is it a one or two or five mile radius of where you're located, either work, you know, location or home location? Because those calls do come up.
They do, they do. We all hate it, but the phone will ring in the middle of the night or in the middle of traffic in Los Angeles. You know, a 15-minute trip can be two hours. Now, what about the, I guess, the idea of downsizing possessions? I mean, do you go like room by room and say, well, first you asked, is this something you want to live with in the next phase of your life? But do you go room by room and say, let's, this is maybe not the most important item, this is too big to take?
Yeah, there is, again, you know, really a process and planning that I go through. My dad is an engineer, and so he taught me a lot about measurements and floor plans and things like that. And so I actually get the specific floor plan for the residents they're going to move into.
Smart.
And then look at what, you know, by their furniture can comfortably and safely move into that. And I keep, you know, emphasizing the safety because I want to set up an environment that's very clutter-free for their walking and mobility, not just now, but at a time that they may have a walker or a cane for assistance.
Catherine, in the first half of our program, we watched as you advised your clients of their options for living transition. So let's watch now as she does touch-ups to their choice of a new home just before they move in.
You're exactly right, Paul. At this point of the process, we've now completed the first three steps of residential transition, which is finding the ideal senior community, the household downsizing, and all the move day planning and coordination. So we're at the last step of the process, which is one of my particular favorites. It's really decorating and arranging the new space so it does feel familiar and homelife.
Plans included.
Exactly. And I want to emphasize that aspect of familiarity. I can't say enough how important this is for the senior family members during this process. One of the things that I do in my role is, back in step one, when I'm interviewing and talking to the seniors and family members about their needs, after we've completed that process, I ask the senior permission to take photos in their current home. And I especially look at the setup on their nightstands, what side of the bedroom they like to sleep on, what they like to have on top of their dressers. And probably another of the most important areas is the bathroom setup. Are they used to reaching to the left or right of the sink for their toothbrush and their bar of soap? And what are they expecting to see in the medicine cabinet when they move in? All of these little details add up because this is such a big change for seniors when they're moving from a place they've lived in for 40 or 50 years. And the first night they're there, how will they feel if they reach for their reading glasses and magazine and can't even find it? So I end up talking with seniors during my process of the household downsizing and really trying to understand what are those particular objects, artwork, and photos that are really special to them. And I usually learn about the stories and backgrounds and experiences that are really associated with each of these and understand why they're so important in this process.
It's so important what you're saying, having experienced this. I would have appreciated the guidance because I didn't think about the, it's nice if you have your own bathroom, to have your own towel set, the things you're comfortable with.
Absolutely, and I think I encourage family members, if they have the money available, to set aside a little budget just for some new linens in the bathroom or bedroom, just to make it feel really fresh and special for the senior when they move in. And it doesn't really take them a lot of money now that we have so many great discount stores available in the area.
Yes, thank goodness.
But it really is important to make it feel both familiar and comfortable, but really fresh and uncluttered. And that's my goal in this process, is to really make that a nice, smooth transition for both the senior as well as the family caregivers.
Well, I love how, just by watching the video here, how open this new place is, and you've kept it free, so there's room for a walker and with the wheelchair, and it's bound to happen. And this is all arranged for a couple, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's really great. Catherine, you know, what you're doing is so important, and I, you know, I don't know, I guess it'd be, my personal experience was so contrary to having a guide like you in the process, and it's like, why didn't I know about you?
Well, thank you, that's really what I see my role as, is really someone that can accompany the family caregivers and the seniors through this process. I look at it like a journey, it really is, and one of the reasons I chose my company name like I did is I really feel that it is important to feel together in the process and to feel supported when you're going through such a big change like this, whether you're the senior or the family member. And I guess, speaking of that, you know, caregivers, I think, sometimes are forgotten as part of, you know, the people that are really affected by this process. And I think one of the things that I've seen over time is really how emotionally the caregivers really have to recognize that the baton, proverbial baton, is being passed to them as now being the leaders of the family when they have to make a move for a parent like this.
And there's nothing more emotionally draining than a move. Well, once again, I'm sorry to say, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Our thanks to our guest, Catherine Fritz of Together in Transition, for helping take the stress out of transitioning to a new home. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. Over half of persons over 65 live with their spouse. Seventy-two percent of men and 42% of women still have the companionship of their married partner. The proportion living with their spouse decreases with age, especially with women. Only 30% of women over 75 years of age live with a spouse. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and we'd like your ideas for future programs. So please give us a call, the numbers there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching, we'll see you next time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
We're not on air.
No, we are. You are. Are we okay? Welcome to City Hall and the Los Angeles City Council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, November the 10th, 2010. Council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and all meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the meeting to order.
Hellercon, Cardenas, Han, Weesar, Coquetz, Coquarian, Labange, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendall, Smith, Westensheim, Garcetti, ten members present, and Quorum, Madam President.
All right, the meeting is now in session. What's our first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Coquarian seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendall moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Madam President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, let's go through the agenda first.
Items one through eight are items known as for a public hearing. Items one through seven are hearing protests against proposed improvements and maintenance of street lighting districts. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on December 8, 2010, to consider a report of protests to be submitted as a result of balloting pursuant to Proposition 218.
Members, any specials? Mr. Rosendall.
Twelve and thirteen.
I'm not there yet.
Hang on. Any specials for where we are? One through eight.
Madam President, item eight is a PCN in Council District Five. That is known as for public hearing. A recommendation is required to grant or deny the application.
All right, we'll hold item eight until Mr. Coquetz arrives. Otherwise, open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten ayes. Next order of business.
Items nine through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item nine has been submitted and distributed to council. Further, it is a commission reappointment. Would you like to hold item nine on the desk?
Yes, and I believe Mr. Rosendall has something.
Yeah, twelve and thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendall.
Item twelve, please.
Okay, Mr. Rosendall got it for you. Okay, next order of business. Okay, open the roll on those items, remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Madam President, items fourteen through thirty-four are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, members, any specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item eighteen, Madam President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any, Mr. Parks?
Seventeen.
All right. Any other specials, members? If not, open the roll on the remaining.
Madam President, pardon me. We do have cards on items fourteen, fifteen, thirty-two, and thirty-four.
All right, will it be special? Ms. Han?
Yes, I would actually like to reconsider from yesterday's agenda, item twenty-three, and then a continuation for a week.
We'll take care of that. I'll call you again after we run through this agenda.
I didn't know where to insert that.
Yeah, no, and remind me. And in case I don't, yeah, remind me.
That's what happened yesterday, though. I told Eric, and then it never happened, so.
As soon as we run through the agenda, I'll go back to you. Okay, next part of the agenda. I'm sorry, open the roll on the remaining items, please.
Twelve ayes.
All right, next item.
Madam President, items thirty-five through thirty-seven are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Mr. Parks?
Madam President, I would recommend on item thirty-five and thirty-six that we do it in open session. Both of these cases have come before the council several times, and in each instance, this is the last case of several that have been settled. And so, we just recently had both of these cases in settling portions of them before council.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you could read the summary of those cases.
Before he does, if you could just make sure that no council mayor wants to go into closed session before reading the.
Members, are there any objections to going into doing this in open session? No objections?
Madam President, for item thirty-five, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $500,000 in the case entitled C. Doe versus City of Los Angeles. And in item thirty-six, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $500,000 in the case entitled Christina Gonzalez versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, so with that, Mr. Clerk, should we open the roll on these items separately or together?
Together.
All right, open the roll, then. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Madam President, on the continuation agenda, item thirty-eight is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, Mr. Thirty-eight. All right, thirty-eight is called special by three people, Mr. Hellercon. Okay. Thirty-eight is special. And you are, too. All right, that's the end of it. All right, so now, Ms. Han. Ms. Han. Okay, you wanted to do a motion regarding yesterday.
Thank you. Yesterday, item twenty-three, I'd like to reconsider it and then continue it for a week. It was a lien on a property, and the owners of the property wanted a little more time to work with building and safety and zoning. I told them I would give them, I told them I'd give them a week. I thought that was fair. But it went through without me doing that yesterday.
A motion for reconsideration on item, what was the number?
I think it was twenty-three yesterday.
Twenty-three from Tuesday, November the ninth, 2010, agenda. So there's a motion on the floor for reconsideration. Would you open the roll on that, please?
Madam President, prior to doing so, for clarification, item twenty-three is council file number ten dash one three two five. Hearing protest relative to Department of Building and Safety report and confirmation of lien against property located at 511 East D Street, also known as 402 North Banning Boulevard.
Can you give me the address of that again?
511 East D Street, also known as 402 North Banning Boulevard.
All right, so do we have the proper case number, Ms. Han?
We're checking.
Okay.
I apologize, colleagues. It's twenty-eight from yesterday.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Han to reconsider item number twenty-eight from Tuesday, November ninth, 2010, agenda. So let's open the roll on Ms. Han's motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, pardon me once again. I apologize. For clarification, item twenty-eight, the council file is ten hyphen one three two two. Hearing protest relative to Department of Building and Safety report and confirmation of lien against property located at 930 North U-Bank Avenue.
All right, Ms. Han, is that the correct, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. All right, let's open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The item is now up for consideration.
I'd like us to continue that for a week, please.
Okay, that'll be without objection. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, we have twelve members present in the chamber now, so I'd like to also have us reconsider item numbers ten and sixteen. Item ten, all right, sixteen had twelve. So we can open the roll on item ten, please. For reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. The item is now before.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Are there any members wishing to comment? There is a card on, there are cards on ten. We already have had a public hearing on this. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. We've received some letters, and we did receive comments, and we did have the public hearing on this. And one of the major assertions I'd like to make for our understanding is that the planning department has been proactive in trying to establish a toolbox. A toolbox that speaks to how we can implement the priorities of our stakeholders that participate in community plans. Now, the community plan is that blanket under the general plan that starts defining our space. The role of how we move and engage all the different functions of a community. And this tool, the CPIO, the Community Plan Implementation Overly District, gives us flexibility based on the consensus building, based on the objectives, based on the goals of the stakeholders when they are moving forward with a community plan. So there have been assertions made that you're going to be spot zoning, you're just going to change your specific plans, that you're going to upset the consensus that we fought very hard to achieve in the past, that we're going to be making it easier for developers to build, or we're going to make it easier for those who do not want development to stop projects. We've heard it from both sides of these contentious arenas. The truth is, this is a tool that can't be implemented if the community plan, if the stakeholders, and if the planning officials feel that this tool can help us facilitate in realizing our goals in the community plan. So it's a tool. This does not give anyone automatic rights. Doesn't change zones automatically. It does not do any of those types of impacts. So I just want to make that as clear as possible. I know there are a lot of questions. But, colleagues, when we have forty percent of our planning staff gone, when we have issues that are very specific, that are, in some places, very dire and need to address, this allows us to move quicker without having to go through all the machinations of a specific plan. So again, this tool should be used once the stakeholders, through the community plan process, gives us an ability to achieve scenarios that meet the goals and objectives that are stated by the different stakeholders as they go through that process. So I know there'll be questions. There'll probably be other specific concerns. We should engage the what ifs. We can have staff come to the table. Why don't we do that? The planning staff that worked on this, can we come forward, please?
Do we have planning staff present?
I did see them earlier. Well, perhaps, Madam President, if there's anybody else on the queue, we'll try to best answer the questions.
There's no one else on the queue.
Beautiful.
If they're not pre, if they're, oh, all right, Mr. Labange, thank you.
I just would love to hear from the staff. And the only thing I would like to see is developed, I know yesterday we talked about staffing in the police department. I would like to see a known senior lead community planners or people who are more the face in the community. And I know the planning department's been decimated, but please join the center table. Who is, Mr. Reyes, how are they interfacing with the community, with neighborhood associations, with neighborhood councils?
Well, when we look at the restructuring of the planning department, we will have geographic teams throughout the city. And through these geographic teams, they will be prioritizing different areas in the city to begin these community plan updates. In the community plan updates, there'll be different scenarios and strategies that'll come from the stakeholders through a series of community meetings in the respective areas. When that occurs, there's going to be a menu of sorts that defines different ways to achieve those goals. And so instead of going through a lot of cue conditions, a lot of different, what we've done in the past, we use a lot of small tools to achieve a scenario. This will be one big tool that covers many of those objectives so that we can actually implement what the community wants based on those meetings in the community plan process.
Got it. And the teams, how big will the teams be? Five, seven members?
Well, the teams differ based on volume of work, based on case history. As the director of planning stated yesterday in Plum, and Councilor Coquarian asked that very same question, that you will have different sized areas throughout the city, and each area will have a team reflective of what typically occurs in those parts of the city when it comes to casework and when it comes to these kinds of objectives or setting these new scenarios.
My only friendly amendment, if there's a need or just there, is that the planning department identifies staff that would work as a point person representative for planning to the variety of neighborhood organizations, neighborhood councils, area, community businesses, associations, and chambers, so that they're the actual point person, that they're known, and that they're, when, once this operation, which, when selected by management, goes into the region, that they circulate this as wide as they can through the system of the internet as well as through the system of local papers.
To address that point, Councilor Labange, after the holidays, after January, once the department has settled down and we've defined these team areas, I do plan, as Chair Plum, to go out into the city and introduce the planners, introduce the teams in respective areas throughout the city. We plan to have four to five of these sessions, and that would be our purpose.
Right.
Is to familiarize the stakeholders with existing planning teams in those regions.
Very good, very good, Mr. Reyes. Thank you. And staff, would you like to say anything?
I apologize. We missed some of the discussion. We left when we thought it was consent.
Oh, you're good.
Sounds like you guys.
You got it down. You got it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. No further comment. Please open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. Next, I'll turn to Mr. Coquetz for item eight. Your motion is required on this item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to grant an application for determination of public convenience and necessity. This is a rare instance where a community is actually waiting with bated breath to approve a liquor store. It serves the Orthodox community with kosher items. It's a critical thing for a community that needs this for their worship and dietary requirements, and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coquetz. We do have one public speaker card from Matthew Dowd.
Yes, thank you. Longtime city council attendee, Matt Dowd, knows how to get on the agenda. And this is a good one that I want to talk about. So I think, on one hand, it's a, the City of Los Angeles is a big city, spread out, a lot of motor vehicles. But we throw up these liquor store things all the time where, you know, you're basically inviting people. I mean, they have to drink. People have to drink. Look at the state of the budget and the economy, what the city's done. Fired everybody. I'm sure they're all homeless, and all they have left is a bottle of alcohol to drink. So you could go both ways on this, and, you know, Paul Coquetz is doing it, so I really don't, he got up, you know, boo hoo about public comments, so I'm really not in favor of anything he's doing unless he's settling my case.
No further speaker cards. Mr. Coquetz?
I would, I would just point out that this location will actually sell no cheap lines, and we don't expect any of the usual problems and drunkenness and anything that you would see in the worst-case scenario of a liquor store. This is one that the community has actually requested and looking forward to going in.
Thank you very much. All right, open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, out of consideration, I think Mr. Parks will be going next on item seventeen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like the colleagues to bring up the Mayor of Calabasas, Barry Grovman, and also a representative from the L.A. County Health and Tobacco Control to come up to the center table. And while they're coming up, I'd like to invite the, we have three public, we have three public comments on this issue, and we'd. have three public comments on this issue, and we'd like them to come to the podium: Esther Schiller, Spencer Lyons, and Eric Batch. And they can come up at this time, make their public comments.
And Mr. Parks, I also have some cards here. I'll go to your cards after we go through the list.
I do hear you.
There's a gentleman on the side. If someone would please take his speaker card over here on the left. He's waving it hard at me.
We have the county health official come up, and also we have the CAO, CLA, and the Madam Chair, what's your comment on the—on the public comments?
I have Dr. Clyde Williams, you have Dr. Barry Grovman, Mayor Grovman, Richard Berger, Monty Messick, Stephen Gallegos, Vanessa Peterson, Bernice Sanders, somebody from Tobacco Control, and Esther Schiller.
Okay, can we have the public comment first and then before we get into the presentation?
Great, all right. Dr. Williams, come on up. Mayor Grovman is at the table. Robert Berger, is Robert Berger here? Come on up. And then Monty Messick. Monty Messick—okay, you're here, all right. Stephen Gallegos. Okay, come on up. We'll take—take those folks at the lectern first. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. I used to smoke a pipe, and it created a lot of problems for the people around me. So I gave it up finally. That was, eh, 30 years ago. However, you also need to add to your list of locations as public areas, recreation areas, recreation centers, and MTA stops, dash stops, because those of us that use MTA and dash often have a problem that within certain distance of the bus stops where a lot of people congregate waiting for the buses, there's no smoking ban. So we get exposed to a lot. Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Robert Berger. In—I'm Project Director of Project Trust at the L.A. County Tobacco Control and Prevention Program. In 2004, I stood before this body as a—as the lead community organizer for Smoke-Free Beaches, in 2007 for Smoke-Free Parks, and in 2010 for Smoke-Free Outdoor Dining. Today, my role is different, but one I'm equally proud of as Project Director of Project Trust, which is the Communities Putting Prevention to Work Grant here in the city of Los Angeles, in the county of Los Angeles, I should say. CPPW is the initiative that has a—that really is expanding the use of evidence-based strategies and programs and mobilizing local resources at the community level, what this effort is about here today. It has a strong emphasis on policy and environment change, and exposure to secondhand smoke is a priority and one that the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Director, Thomas Frieden, calls "a winnable battle, defined as one that has a large-scale impact on health and with known effective strategies to intervene." We are looking at—and just to let you know, this has attention, and the city of Los Angeles has attention from the White House. Health and Human Secretary Sibelius was out here and joined our own L.A. County Director of Public Health, Jonathan Fielding, in August to announce this initiative locally, and so there is a very strong focus. My current role is not one where I am allowed or take specific positions, but comprehensive policies are becoming more the norm. And in addition to the truly comprehensive policy in Calabasas, other area cities like Santa Monica, Pasadena, Burbank have them.
Thank you, sir.
And the city of L.A. has the opportunity—
Thank you.
—to take the next step—
Thank you.
—in showing its leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, who would identify yourself?
Good morning. My name is Stephen Gallegos. I am the Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County. Protecting people and children from the dangerous poisons in secondhand smoke is our priority concern. Policies that address these efforts are ones we endeavor to provide support and expertise for. Los Angeles is a recognized leader around the world in providing cleaner air for its citizens through ordinances that restrict exposure to noxious poisons, pollution, and secondhand smoke. We look forward to working together with Councilmember Parks and all members of the Los Angeles City Council to provide these protections still needed to reduce unwanted exposure to the poisons and secondhand smoke in all outdoor areas where people gather. Thank you.
Next speaker, if you'd identify yourself. Next speaker?
Thank you very much. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm Director of the Smoke-Free Apartment House Registry.
Why don't you pull the microphone down? I'm—yeah.
I try to pretend that I'm taller. We provide technical assistance to landlords and to tenants on the issue of drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. We've also provided technical assistance to policymakers in the cities of Calabasas, Santa Monica, Glendale, Burbank, and South Pasadena on this issue. If a work group is to be convened to help develop the nitty-gritty details for the motion before you, we would be delighted to be invited to participate. Thank you.
Vanessa Peterson, is Vanessa Peterson here? Come on up. Bernice Sanders, is Bernice Sanders present? She'll come on up. A representative from Tobacco Control, no name. Is there a representative here from Tobacco Control, the American Heart Association? Okay. Esther Schiller? Okay, she just spoke. All right, let's have the three of you go.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? My name is Vanessa Peterson. I'm the Senior Development Manager for the American Lung Association in California, and we commend the city of Los Angeles for taking steps toward creating a healthier community for its residents, workers, and visitors. With a mission of saving lives by improving lung health and preventing lung disease, the American Lung Association California supports strong local regulations that protect the public from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. Tobacco is the number-one preventable cause of death and disease in California. Over 60,000 Americans exposed to secondhand smoke die each year. I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed comprehensive smoking ordinance. We believe that this ordinance is necessary because of the well-known harmful health effects attributed to secondhand smoke. According to the EPA, 4,700 Californians die every year from exposed—exposure to secondhand smoke and illnesses attributed to this cost us about sixty—excuse me, attributed to it cost us about $6 billion yearly. With these points in mind, we are happy that you are considering a comprehensive ordinance which will do a great deal to protect the residents of Los Angeles from the dangers of secondhand smoke. Thank you.
If you'd identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Bernice Sanders, and I'm a resident of the Eighth District, and I'm also a volunteer with the American Cancer Society. The American Cancer Society is a nationwide voluntary organization dedicated to eliminating cancer through research, education, and service. And the American Cancer Society supports a strong and comprehensive smoke-free policy. And I have seen firsthand how cancer from smoking destroys lives and communities. I've seen loved ones struggle with cancer and emphysema. Secondhand smoke is a proven health risk and has been identified as a cancer-causing risk in humans. Moving forward with this ordinance is an important step to protect the residents of this city. Moving—we would love to have this ordinance passed, and we would love to have a smoke-free city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, if you'd identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Esther. I'm from the American Heart Association. Good morning. I'm a volunteer spokesperson for the American Heart Association of the Greater Los Angeles Division, and I'm here today to express our support for the efforts and vision of Councilmember Parks in recognizing the need to protect Los Angeles residents and visitors from this exposure of secondhand smoking. We also want to thank and acknowledge Councilmember Perry to get this ordinance drafted. Regulating smoking in public places is an important step toward changing people's attitudes towards smoking and discouraging the inherently dangerous behavior of tobacco use among non-tobacco users, especially children. Because Los Angeles has been a leader in so many different aspects of tobacco control and the anti-smoking movement, we applaud the city of L.A. for continuing to set new national and global standards in protecting residents from the dangers of tobacco. On behalf of the American Heart Association, we applaud the city of Los Angeles and Councilmember Parks. We thank you for your vision as you look to craft a strong ordinance that will protect residents and visitors in the city of L.A. from the diary effects of secondhand smoke. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Ankar Patel, and after that, we'll go to Van Nuys.
Ankor Patel from Chatsworth. I'd just like to read one thing off, especially to the people out here speaking. This is a request for the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance, right? This is an actual—actually the ordinance. And again, I'd like to address the people back here more than the councilmen, because the rest of you that spoke noticed that most of the councilmen don't pay attention when you're up here speaking. And the reason why they don't pay attention is because this is a dog and pony show. Everything on this agenda has been pre-approved. It only gets on the agenda because the powers that be, the powers that be—that's a general term—the people who give campaign contributions to these elected officials, politicians, have some say on what gets on the agenda. More say than you and I. Now, this is going to go to the aging committee, right? This is going to go back to committee, and the rest of the ordinance will be presented when the city attorney writes something that is legal, and it'll go to committee, they'll talk about it in committee, and then it'll come back out here. So all of you that are here for this, I would suggest you continue to follow the process, right? Input at all levels, not just come here, take your two minutes and speak, because I've been doing this.
Mr. Patel, if you could please address the council?
And so I would—I would suggest to the—the people against smoking to continue to follow the process, get involved with writing the ordinance, go to the subcommittees, and actually make your voices heard and important, because right here, as exemplified on Fridays with your presentations, is a dog and pony show.
Now, we thank you very much. We go to Van Nuys. Mr. Darian?
Good morning, City Councilmembers, Council President Perry. I'm running for Congress in the 27th District. Part of my campaign is to eliminate cigarette smoking in the United States. So I saw this morning—I came to speak on another matter, saw this on the agenda, so I'd like to say a few words. First of all, I grew up as an asthmatic. I was hospitalized two times at three years old and seven years old, growing up in Van Nuys on Bly Street. I had allergy shots at the time I was 12, playing baseball. I used to have to have them in my left arm so I could throw the ball with my right. I can tell you that the pollutants that were in the air before caused me great distress in having to breathe from the lead that was in the gasoline back in the old days. We've done away with lead, we've done away with asbestos. It's time now to deal—do away with nicotine in our society and this smoke. Secondhand smoke, they're poisoning the air, they're poisoning their children, people that are smoking. They have no right whatsoever to be poisoning the air as they walk through the city, causing —the contaminating the air and causing a burden and health risks on everybody that ingests this toxic substances. It must be done. It would be a dereliction of duty not to pass—to have the city attorney write something that bans this, and if any councilmembers were to vote against it, I would consider it to be a dereliction of duty here. The people of Los Angeles and the United States, as well as California, have a right to clean air and be prevented from these health risks, where we have 60,000 people, more than all the people that perished in the Vietnam War every year from smoke that is not—is being ingested by them not smoking. And you have another half a million people that are dying from smoking firsthand. It's outrageous that it's gone on this far, and it must stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we asked today two people to come to the center table. First, we have Mayor Grovman, who's probably—from Calabasas, has probably had more practical experience in this issue from an elected position. And also, we asked Monty Messick from the L.A. County Health and Tobacco Control. He's going to reference a book that everybody has a copy of, and what's particularly important in this book is your district is actually identified in it. It's just not a general county study, it's just not a general study about the United States, but you can actually see your district in it on page six, I believe, that identifies specific information which you can follow. And let me ask Mayor Grovman to start off, and basically, I'd like him to base—eliminate some of the misperceptions about addressing secondhand smoke and how their city went forward on this ordinance, and then the many other cities followed.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. Madam President, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. At first, I want to recognize the persistence of Councilman Parks, which is very welcome, given the gravity of this issue. Let me just tell you that—that our city was the first city anywhere to take this to the extent that we did, and the reason for this excessive ordinance, which is now several years in place, is that this does not ban cigarette smoking. We don't seek to ban people from doing things. This simply regulates secondhand smoke. So this was something that was pragmatic and was aimed at dealing with what is clearly, and I can tell you, I've debated this literally everywhere from a health standpoint, the number-one cause of preventable disease is secondhand smoke. Once that was established, our law was aimed at simply regulating that, and frankly, what it really says is you can't smoke in a place where others can be anticipated to be present. It empowers our planning director to identify places where smoking is permitted, no different than LAX, for example, where you have a cordoned-off area that's convenient, that people can go and smoke without exposing other individuals. We've had nothing but success from this. It is now widely popular. It is not an enforcement issue. We don't use the sheriff to enforce it, although the sheriff will respond under certain circumstances. What the ordinance was able to do was empower citizens to be less shy about saying to somebody smoking, "If you don't mind, the law now backs what we're asking, please put the cigarette out." We've had no instances of any, you know, problem with that. We rely on our businesses and our major areas to do the self-regulation, and when it becomes necessary, a ticket can be issued. We've basically had no issues. So the notion that the sky was going to fall never happened. The sky is quite blue. If you look to the west, you'll see a very blue sky right above Calabasas. The restaurants are very pleased with it because it's become a collecting place for people that want to enjoy dining without being exposed. Employees, unions, everybody has supported this. So I'm here to sort of answer questions that might allay any concerns, because we've done it, it's been in place for many years. It is a public health law, it does not ban cigarettes. You know, let me just end with one comment that I found very poignant when I was debating this all over, when our time came, when we took this broad approach, and that was from the medical community and particularly from the Director of the Cleveland Cancer Institute, who said to me that secondhand smoke exposure was worse than the exposure that an individual who smokes gets. And I said, like you would say, "That doesn't make any sense, how can that be possible?" And his response was, based upon surgeries, lung surgeries that they do at that institute, they discovered that smokers that smoke get a filtered plume that is very hot, and a smoker will learn not to inhale deeply because they'll create a coughing reflex. Smokers learn to inhale carefully and slowly to avoid the heat, not so on the other end of the cigarette. If you're outdoors or you're in an area like— If you're outdoors or you're in an area like this, the cigarette smoke at that end of the plume is cool and it passes freely into the deep tissue of the lung, and this is something that they've discovered in lung surgery. It is not in dispute. Once it was clear to us the nature of this public health threat, it became easy to find regulations that did not offend people. And keep in mind, there is no right to smoke. There is a right to public safety. There's a right to be safe in your home, no different than in the Old West where we still are the last western frontier. We still don't allow people to fire off guns during celebrations because the bullets will come down and hit people. Those are reasonable, rational regulations. This one has really worked. And I'm happy to take any questions of any detail, I hope it'll be of any assistance. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Messick, uh, could you give us an overview of the report that was completed by your department?
Um, yeah, Monty Messick, I'm the Deputy Director with the L.A. County Department of Public Health Tobacco Control and Prevention Program. And, um, Madam President, uh, City Councilmembers, Councilmember Parks, thanks for inviting us to speak. Briefly, um, I want to applaud the city of Los Angeles for including our report, cigarette smoking in Los Angeles County, local data to inform tobacco policy as a factor in your decision-making process regarding the motion before you. Um, in general, this report, um, looked at smoking prevalence, that is, the, the number of people that smoke, um, at the level of, uh, the cities in L.A. County and, and communities, and in particular to Los Angeles City, broke it down by council district using a statistical method, um, called small area analysis. And as Councilmember Parks noted, we did do it by, by council district, with the highest smoking prevalence being in, in Council District Eight at 19 percent, and the lowest being in Council District Eleven at 9.8 percent, um, where the, um, the state, um, smoking prevalence is about, um, I think it's about 12 to 14 percent. Furthermore, um, as the report's title would suggest, we have policy recommendations listed at, on the last page, number nine, and in particular, one of our policy recommendations for, uh, local cities to consider is reducing exposure to secondhand smoke in, um, in outdoor public places, such as, uh, outdoor seating at restaurants, uh, and bars. Uh, I know the city's recently done something around outdoor dining, uh, that's going to go into effect March eighth. Um, parks, which the city has done also, around doorways and open windows, which the city has not done, public events, which the city has not done. However, the city has done something in the area of farmers' markets, uh, service areas, which I do not believe the city has done, or hospital campuses.
One thing I think would be important, you mentioned, uh, the state average. It would appear on page seven that 14 of the 15 council districts are above the state average. Is that accurate?
Um, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you the-
How many as far as a percentage?
I'm sorry, one more time, uh, Councilmember Parks? One more time, Councilmember Parks?
No, I said, if, from looking at your report on page seven, it would appear that 14 of the 15 council districts are above the state average.
Um, I would have to, uh, despite eyeballing it from here, I don't have that information in front of me, but, uh-
Yeah, because I thought you mentioned that the state average is somewhere around, uh, 12 percent.
14 percent, about 14 percent.
14 percent.
Yeah.
So colleagues, again, it's important to look at your district and see the number of people that's impacted. Uh, one thing I'd like, uh, Mayor Grobman to comment on, and this is something that comes up every time this discussion is held, is what is the, been the enforcement strategy, the number of resources used by your city, and how has the smoking population and those secondhand smoke, uh, advocates, how have they self-policed themselves?
Uh, you would think this would have been an enforcement problem, but I think the biggest surprise that some of us anticipated was that it's empowered the average citizen when seeing somebody smoking near them to advise that person of the law, and what you find is, the, well over the majority of cases, people say, "I was not aware of it," and they put the cigarette out. Um, in those instances where it doesn't happen, we rely on businesses and others where people congregate to smoke, to come out with whatever personnel they have, or, you know, promenades and places like that, they have security personnel who will ticket them or notify the city and take down the information. It doesn't happen that often, and most of the retail outlets, after being told and educated, have self-policed this. So I would think that the thing you will find is it's going to empower the average citizen, the, well over the average that does not smoke, to take that protective polite step, now knowing the law backs it, and be less shy, and most people comply very quickly. We've had no issues. There are occasions where the sheriff will visit a retail outlet and remind them, usually it's a code enforcement officer. It has had no fiscal impact to our city whatsoever. I will tell you, a lot of other cities are doing it. I think that you will look back in time, and people, the most common question is, "What took so long?" So I would think you, you might want to consider it now, it's like every other action of boldness, that you will be, uh, appreciative of having done at a later date, and you'll find a lot of public support for this, uh, once you go forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me make a statement, and then I'll push my button again.
Yes.
Colleagues, what we're trying to do today is, uh, eliminate, uh, in the sense of the effort of the city to pick and choose places that we've done in the past, whether it's farmers' markets, whether it's government buildings, restaurants, and actually deal with a comprehensive ordinance that addresses common spaces of people impacted by secondhand smoke. The second thing we want to accomplish today is to give a, create a working group with many of the people that came today to speak, and our city attorneys, CAO and CLA, to go about putting together an ordinance that fits the city of L.A., rather than just replicating an existing ordinance that may be in another city. So I'll push my button again.
Mr. Kretz is next.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I had to deal with something like this 15 or 20 years ago, when I organized L.A. City, West Hollywood, and Santa Monica to all go no-restaurant smoking, and the business community was terrified and said our, our restaurants would be shutting down, and that this would be impossible to enforce. And of course, those, those things weren't true, it actually had, uh, no visible impact on businesses, and, and it was entirely self-enforcing. Now, my recollection when you passed this in Calabasas was that businesses reacted the same way, but there was some outcry and some testimony against this when it came to, uh, to, to the council. Now, what was your experience in terms of, uh, that opposition, and how does the business community feel about this now?
Again, if I can point to the most important element of what we did, we met with the business community, and we pointed out we weren't banning cigarettes, so they were still able to not have their business interrupted by having designated areas where a patron can go and smoke, very similar to LAX, we can go into an area and smoke. For that reason, there was more support than you might imagine, because the employees were tired of having to be exposed by people smoking everywhere, and the businesses saw it as an opportunity to create a very pro-health environment, uh, for, place for people to come. The businesses are doing extremely well, there's, you know, it's a very popular thing in the business community and in our city to have been associated with this, not something I would have thought when we did it. So, I mean, whoever would have thought that I'd be here speaking on this issue? There's a lot of things I'm involved in, but I'm proud to be part of it, and it just shows the support that has ultimately come for it. Cities all over the world are doing it, they're doing it in Paris, they've done it in Britain, in places you never would have thought. And I think that's the reaction to the fact that there is no dispute on the public health issue of secondhand smoke, and it's having a major impact. You're going to feel it in this city if you do it. You're going to feel it, you're going to see it, and it's going to make a difference. One other little side benefit, all of our cities are being hit hard on, uh, you know, runoff water issues and storm drain issues, and that is large part impacted by cigarette butts, which are unfiltered, you know, filtered, contaminated things all over the streets. Just walk out of here today, you're going to see it everywhere. We've had a dramatic decline in that kind of pollution in the streets. So it has that other side benefit, because it's a dirty habit. People want to do it, they should do it, but not when it affects other people, and it has worked famously in our city.
So in, in Calabasas, you allow a business to designate a smoking area?
The, um, planning director, city staff, takes the applications and will approve a place that is sufficiently meets the criteria. So anybody that, you know, in any commons, you know, look, the point is that people ought not be smoking in City Hall, on the front of City Hall steps, where patrons that want to do business for the public come here. But there's nothing wrong with locating it in a concealed area around the back, it's a 20-yard walk, and they can do what they want to do freely, and nobody's impacted while coming to do business in the city. And that was the key to the success of our law. We do not ban people from smoking cigarettes, that's their choice, but we restrict where they can expose other people, and that's why it worked, and that's why it's acclaimed.
Hopefully, we can, uh, look at your successful experience and, and model it, uh, and significantly contribute to the health and environment, uh, of our city by, uh, passing this measure. And, uh, I ask my colleagues to, uh, join Councilmember Parks in, in supporting this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Lamont is our next speaker.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mr. Parks, if, uh, uh, all of us have passion, Mr. Parks showed a lot of passion on this issue here, so I want to thank Mr. Parks, he came to our committee. Mayor Grobman, is that correct now, Mayor? And, uh, how old is your city now?
Going on 20 years.
20 years, good. Uh, this is an effort that takes a lot of public education, and so we need to know how we could educate the public about this, and it's a transformation. In the, uh, many years that I've been here, they used to smoke in these chambers. Mr. City Clerk, the man who had your job about 20 years ago, used to smoke right there, right there. All that is leading to a transformation, and Marvin Brody was the leader on this council that led the way, many others did, and now Mr. Parks is leading the way here to expand it more. So as Chairman of the Arts Health and Agent Committee, I want to thank all the advocates. Could all the advocates for this, uh, measure stand up, please? Good job there, Ms. Ha, very good, very good. So we want to thank you, you, that you make a consistent effort all the time. Give them a hand for their work as, uh, thank you very much. I vote.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Hi, no worries. Thank you, Madam President. Barry, it's good to see you.
See you.
From the Showtime days, uh, to your leadership as Mayor of Calabasas. I'm looking at the chart, and I see that my district has the lowest amount of smokers, uh, 9.8 of the city of Los Angeles, and I'm looking at, at, at Calabasas, and you're at 7.3. And then I look at Malibu, and it's 5.8, which is the lowest of them all. So I guess when people want fresh air and they live closer to the beach, they take it more seriously, and therefore even secondhand smoking is, it becomes a natural issue for all of us to look at. How did you enforce this?
Well, we have, um, we did it with a lot of public education, and we, uh, educated our businesses, and we have, you know, the business establishments doing the enforcement, but I, we relied on the fact that citizens would self-enforce it. Most people would ask somebody not to smoke, a lot of people were shy about it, but when they had a law backing it, they were willing to walk up and say, "Do you know this is against the rules here, and we'd appreciate if you'd put it out." So it gave them an empowerment. Uh, we also gave some enforcement to citizens, we gave them a citizen standing provision, it's never been used, but that was aimed at, should our council or staff ever become remiss, their citizen activity that could occur. That's from the law, Proposition 65 in California, which I was also able to have a hand in writing, and these things have worked. The sky does not fall when you take a bow of public health staff.
On that same point there, I see, and I know Mr. Parks is going to tweak it, and we're going to go back to committee, but it restricts smoking in multi-unit housing, like apartments and condos, uh, including, uh, patios and balconies and so on. Um, how does that work? Does it cause disharmony in the building, or how do, you know, somebody who hates smoking doesn't smoke? I quit when I was 39 years old, it was a gift to me, to myself, to stop smoking, and, and I did, I called Turkey, did, and that was the end of it. But if you're in an apartment complex and the people upstairs are smoking on the balcony, uh, can you get into this, uh, problem of people living together and attacking each other and so on? How do you deal with that?
A very big problem, because there's nothing more offensive to a family with kids to open the door and have fresh air and have smoke bellying into the house.
Yeah.
What the apartments did was we phased it in, we grandfathered people that were already smoking, we weren't going to have people thrown out, but the apartment buildings have tried to segregate, so they're moving people towards locations where the smokers reside, trying to keep the rest of the building, uh, more amenable to smoke, people moving in that won't smoke. And ultimately, there'll be no smoking. The only area we don't regulate is private property, um, because that's private property, and we're not interfering with people's rights on private property. Now, you do have an interesting problem when you have homeowners associations, generally you have people that smoke on the board, and they resist allowing this within the association. I'm getting to the point where we're going to ask the associations to pull their residents and force a vote, because we know that most people want to do this. So we're being assertive on it, but it's got its rewards, uh, I will also mention we're cracking down on sales to minors. You might want to see how bad that is in L.A., it's bad everywhere, we crack down, we require places that are caught, big supermarket chains to post a big sign saying they were caught selling cigarettes to minors. It works. We're trying to drop the number of kids that are buying cigarettes, which is really an awful number, to be honest.
Yeah, I saw that in a, uh, one of these, uh, gas stations that have a, you know, food stuff inside, where they were blocked from selling any cigarettes because they were caught doing that. So putting out an enforcement mechanism in public spaces like that works too.
Yes, and, uh, we've had very little enforcement problem in all the years we've been doing it, which is what I suspected. This is a common sense effort, and I attribute it, and will encourage and will work with your city attorney on trying to shape it in a way that makes sense. Banning cigarettes didn't make sense to me.
Right.
Controlling the risk did, and that's all we sought to do.
Well, thank you for your leadership, and thanks for coming before our city council. It's good to see you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Kretz, for a second time?
I just wanted to, to amplify on Bill's question. Uh, I had a couple of cases in, in West Hollywood years ago where people shared a balcony, and one person was a non-smoker with health problems, the other person sat and smoked on the balcony, and only one window, um, and that person actually was forced to inhale secondhand smoke on a regular basis, couldn't move because they had a rent control department, they were a low-income senior citizen, and it caused real health problems, and there was no way to deal with it. Um, this actually is a perfect answer, and this happens every once in a while. If it happened in a small city, I'm sure it happens, it was some frequency in a larger city like Los Angeles. So, uh, I think it's important that that element is in there, and you will bring relief on an occasional basis to people trapped in those kinds of circumstances. So I think that's a key element to, to keep in, in our ordinance as well.
Um, Mr. Reyes, and then I think Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, thank you for your hard work, and, and we look at the city of Los Angeles, it's an international city, a city of, of immigrants who are coming in first generation, and smoking is part of, way of life, uh, in many of the countries from, uh, where they originate. In terms of outreach and, um, looking at, uh, multilingual, multicultural approach, can you speak to that in terms of, uh, how we could, um, create that sense of awareness? And if there are any programs in place that we can speak to, or maybe we can use as a council office?
Yes, many of the groups that are here today in support, which are highly regarded groups, whether, you know, it's the local tobacco organizations, or even American Lung and American Heart, I'm sure can help participate in what Councilman Parks has suggested, which is a group that will help structure something that fits L.A., and that would be a component that's incorporated. I will tell you that the facts are so strong on, in support of this issue, that it really becomes an issue of how best to educate people. So you're right on with what you're saying, finding and tuning an education system that will work in a multicultural city like Los Angeles will work, but the facts are there, and when people hear them, uh, they will be very supportive. What I've also found is that, you know, serious smokers are the first to understand this. Many of the most serious smokers become the most courteous people, because they know what they're doing to themselves, they don't want to do it to other people. So we found a lot of support among smokers, and I think it's all about education. I've given you a few facts, I don't have to bore you with the rest, but the facts are so strong that part of the task force that Councilman Parks is advocating should address exactly what you're saying. I'm very willing to help out.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, colleagues, today, uh, I think when we look at the material that's been provided by the Health Department, I think one of the figures that, uh, is significant is that it stated that 87.9 percent of non-smokers, uh, show a detectable level of nicotine in their bloodstream, uh, and this is something that's determined, uh, by surgeons that identify this number. It's generally perceived that this comes from secondhand smoke, and so there's, they have not scientifically made that connection, but, uh, it's hard to determine why 87 percent of non-smokers have nicotine in their system. Uh, I think it's important that we review the material provided by the Health Department, but particularly the comments by Mayor Grobman, again, who's probably had more practical experience from a legislative point of view-
probably had more practical experience from a legislative point of view and an executive point of view in municipal government as we move forward. What, the intent of this ordinance is, again, I want to make a new instruction on our committee report. First of all, ask that we approve the committee report, but we add instruction three, that creates a working group headed by the CLACAO and the City Attorney's Office to work with the groups that have come before us today, and anyone else who have interest, and particularly Mayor Grobman, and also the County Health, to be a part of that working group, to create a ordinance that is central to the city of L.A. And we'd like them also to tackle some of the very difficult issues that we've not dealt with before. And that deals with public places, places of employment, multi-unit residences, common area, enclosed places such as hotels, businesses. We'd like them to give a very comprehensive approach so that the city of L.A. can look at it, and when that ordinance comes back, the council will have the ability to deal with each element of it. But we certainly do not want to continue down the path of picking out common areas one at a time. We'd like to look at it in the sense, the general ability to give the city of L.A. a, if not a smoke-free environment, we'd at least give them, people the ability to expect, expectation not to be confronted with smoke if they're a non-smoker. And so that's what we'd like to add, and make a motion to add that third instruction, and that we move forward in this committee report. And want to thank the Mayor Grobman and County Health, and all of the speakers that came here today. And we encourage all of you to be a part of moving forward on this very comprehensive ordinance.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure that for the committee, the council file, that that document from Health Department's a part of the council file, and also some of the notes that we provided to you.
All right. Ms. Han and Mr. Lamont, I think what we'll do is take the commission person first.
Commissioners first.
First, yeah, yeah.
The county.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. It won't be, it won't be very long. So we have commission appointments for nine, 14, and 15. We'll take item number nine first.
Item number nine is the reappointment of Mr. Jason Elias to the Green retrofit development advisory council.
All right. Would you like the commissioner candidate to come forward? Yeah. Mr. Weston, I believe that HCED was the lead on this appointment?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Mr. Elias is before us right now, and just went through HCED this morning, with our full approval. If you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, Madam President, members, we had a committee meeting this morning where we chatted with Jason about how the council was going on and where they thought they would head in the future. I think we had a very good debate, not debate, a discussion. Unanimously, we want to see him reappointed. And with that, I'll just ask you to, you know, say a few things. I mean, we really don't have to ask him any questions, but if you want to, you can. But this is a very exciting, cutting-edge council that I think in the future is going to not only save us money, but create jobs and do a lot to make the city of Los Angeles truly the green capital of this country.
Yes, and I'll, thank you very much, council member. I, again, want to show my appreciation for this body for passing unanimously our Green Building retrofit and workforce development program ordinance last year. We, as the advisory council, have had several meetings over the last six, seven months. The program is underway. We have saved the jobs of 40 folks slated for layoff in GSD, who are now in our Green Building Training Program at Trade Tech. And these folks are ready to get to work on municipal retrofits. So with that said, we have a lot of work to do in the council, figuring out which projects we need to start with. But the bottom line is, this is one of the bright spots in the city budget, with $60 million in stimulus and the possibility of $39 million in Q EBC bonds. Our program is well underway, and it's going to be a big success, and it's because of the work of this body. That's it.
Other speakers? All right. Well, with that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item is 14.
Item 14 is the appointment of Ms. Mary Garcia to the Commission for Community and Family Services.
All right. Is she present? We do have some speaker cards. Would you like to come to the center table? And who will be taking the lead on this appointment? Mr. Lamont? I believe this went through your committee. While Mr. Lamont is coming back, we have two speaker cards, Mr. Zuma Dogg, Mr. Matthew Dowd, and Mr. Arnold Sacks. If you'd please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, all. Good morning to the commission appointment, and looks like a fine individual. Of course, I am always very wary of any Marantoni of Viragosa commissioner appointment, because I'm concerned of things like money being pilfered and circumvented and not taking, not making it to the community. And if I could please have a little bit of silence, thank you. Remember, we do have a federal plaintiff who was victorious speaking. Anyway, some things you can do. Let's get beyond the fact that every time Viragosa appoints somebody, a lot of bad things happen. Money disappears, pilfered, given to family members, cronies, sisters, relatives, and it doesn't make it to the community. So you know what? That's problem number one. Since we're speaking of community and family services, there's federal and state money to be handed out to services to provide the families and communities. Please make sure the money makes it to the street level, not pilfered off by council members like Janice Han and whoever. I hear it's a problem. I heard Bill Hui at the Fair Housing Coalition yesterday. And so beyond that, I think the city council has really made it hard for families in these economic times through their restrictive policies and through their flat-out fiscally irresponsible decision-making. And I know, for example, the city's going to be coming up several million dollars short that could be used for programs like this, because they have lost in federal court over First Amendment violations. So I'd like to say to the commissioner, please realize you're going to be operating on a shoestring budget. Oh, that's the other thing. The city council, they blew all the money. They put Viragosa, he put it into shady real estate dealings in shady Wall Street. We lost billions. Now we can't provide basic services. There's not going to be any decency for a lot of the people you're going to be representing. So good luck. You're going to need it. They just pilfered, squandered, wasted, abused.
All right. Next speaker. Matthew Dowd, are you here? Following Matthew Dowd will be Arnold Sacks. Is Arnold Sacks still here? All right. Mr. Sacks, why don't you come to the lectern?
Thank you. I'll wave this one. I think Zuma covered that.
Before we start the clock, Mr. Sacks, you've waived your right to speak on this item. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Lamont.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mary Garcia is a great resident of Los Angeles in the North Hollywood area, been very passionate about everything that she's been involved in. She will make a great contribution here. And Mary, tell us a little about yourself. And I know you're going to heal well. I know that was a little slip. But Mary Garcia, ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Tom. I want to say first that I'm honored to be here in front of you today, and with Tom's support, becoming a commissioner on this newly organized board. I was appointed originally to Citizens' Union of Participation by then-council president John Farrow. And I stayed on that board through Tom Lamont, my councilperson. And so I'm very proud to be before you today. Yes, I have about 26 years of community involvement, all over the city, actually. And I'm looking forward to working with this new organization. And if you'd like to ask me some questions, I can maybe answer those.
Members, I ask for an eye vote. Mr. Kerkorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Garcia. I know her well, and have worked closely with her. She's one of the founding members of the Midtown North Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and has been one of the most active members in the Neighborhood Council movement. She's worked closely with me as chair of E and N in helping to shape policy, governing neighborhood councils throughout the city. And she's also been a champion of the arts, and not only a champion of the arts, but somebody who's made a personal difference. For example, with the Chandler Outdoor Gallery, which she conceived, which transformed an entire area of C D four from just what, a bland, old MTA right-of-way into an outdoor art gallery. So it's, these are just small examples of the way that Mary Garcia, through individual effort and commitment and dedication to service, has made an impact on this city. And I know she's going to as a commissioner as well. So I congratulate her, and I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. There's no further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
And that I'll go forth with. Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm so honored.
We'll take item 15 next, and then go to item 18. Ms. Han.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm really very pleased to stand up here today and have a very enthusiastic support of the mayor's appointment of Candy Lewis to fill the vacancy on the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Candy resides in the Harbor Gateway of Los Angeles. She lives in Athens on the Hill. She's a dynamic leader with corporate business experience, desire and interest in promoting community goals. She's presently executive director of the Positive Results Corporation, a nonprofit that promotes children and families safely in their homes and their communities and their schools. I honored her here recently for her work during Teen Violence Dating, wait, Teen Dating Violence Prevention Month. She puts on a summit every year that really makes teens aware of this very dangerous environment that they are placing themselves in without even knowing it. So I know Candy as a community activist, someone who cares about her community, loves where she lives, looks to better the world, so that when she leaves, it'll be better off because she was here. And that's really how I feel about Candy. She's involved in the Neighborhood Council. So I think this is a great pick for you, Candy. And I know the Harbor Area or all the area planning commissions usually only hear appeals. But I do know that under our city charter, area planning commissions can hear a variety of issues that are important to the community. And that's something I'd like to see the Harbor Area Planning Commission do in a greater way. So why don't you talk a little bit about how your background fits and really brings a different perspective to our planning commission down in the Harbor Area?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, council members. I'm honored to be here. I am born and raised in the city of Los Angeles, so I know the city. My mother is born and raised in the city of Los Angeles. So there has been a lot of change. And my background, I've been in sales and marketing, so I've done a lot of outside sales, working with all types of businesses, primarily real estate-related, for 15 years. So I would love to work in this particular field, because as a stakeholder and as a vested homeowner who's interested in seeing the growth and development for the city of Los Angeles, I think I can bring a positive change, as well as a different perspective from the aspect of being not only someone who lives and born and raised in the city, but also as a homeowner and as a business owner as well. And I do have children who are grown that are now looking to start their own businesses. So this would be an opportunity for me to make sure that the city of Los Angeles brings in very positive, growth-oriented businesses into the community, which will in turn stimulate our economic development as a city as well.
Thank you. And you know, Candy, you really are the perfect candidate for this job. You know, when Dennis Zine and I were on the elected Charter Reform Commission and from 1997 and 1999, one of the things that came out of our new city charter was these area planning commissions. Because in the old days, there was one planning commission, five folks that met downtown, and the neighborhoods felt very disconnected from the decisions that were made down here. And many times, that commission made decisions about neighborhoods that they really didn't even know where they were, and probably never even driven close to them. So the idea of an area planning commissions came because we felt people like you would better understand neighborhoods, better understand communities, and the issues associated with the decisions that you made about land use opportunities. So you're really perfect for this, and I wholeheartedly support you.
Thank you.
You know this as well as I do, that the members of the Harbor Gateway area have urged us to try to curb the liquor stores and licenses in the gateway. So we hope that we can count on your support for continuing to limit the amount of liquor licenses and liquor stores in that community.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's very important that where we live, that we keep a safe environment. And we'd like to see businesses that are positive to our neighborhood. And liquor stores and drive-through restaurants, as well as the motel motels, those are not conducive to family growth and development, nor for community development. We'd like to see things like, in our neighborhood, we don't have a shoe repair shop. We don't have a bakery. I'd love to see a virtual business, a virtual office business developed in our community. That way, all of our small businesses will have an opportunity to provide a working spot for them that would be really conducive to making our neighborhood grow, develop, increase our tax base, and give opportunities for our community residents.
Thank you very much. You're going to do a great job. Colleagues, I ask for an eye vote for the appointment of Candy Lewis to the Harbor Area Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. We do have a number of cards. First one is from Dwayne Abdu. Dwayne Abdu, are you coming up to speak? All right, he's not going to speak. Dr. Clyde Williams, Dr. Clyde Williams, you put in a card on this item? Carl Dawson, are you speaking on this item? Okay. Michael Fisher, are you going to speak on this item? And then Mark Zandell Waterson, are you speaking on this item? All right. Jack Fen, are you speaking on this item? Jack Fen? Okay. And then Ankar Patel?
I'm here.
Okay, okay. Okay, somebody, great. All right. Are those all the right speakers in? There are no speakers on this. All right, great. Mr. Zuma Dogg and Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Seems to be some confusion from the pro tembe desk. We're on item 15, not 18. So people, you were not called on the, you were called on the wrong item. Now, I hope, my opinion is, too many times, I hope planning does not mean kickbacks, first of all. Now, first of all, if you want to revitalize the area, shoe repair? Nobody repairs shoes anymore enough to bring the city out. You go buy new shoes, a bakery? How about something like Microsoft, or like Silicon Valley, or something really innovative? You got all that land. And also, the commissioner needs to know budget cuts. Whatever plans you have anyway, basically put them on hold. Because the economic, the economies, thank you for looking, thank you. Oh, I didn't know you were so beautiful. Yes, now I definitely support. But I'd like to do is warn you that the economy and budget's going to be much worse than they're trying to tell you, because they totally padded the budget, and the economy's dead in the water. And they filtered it much worse. They're doing everything to cover their tracks. And so, anyway, you're not going to have the money. Excuse me, Tom. Don't make me have to say, Sid Alabanza, I got the floor. Look at him. I'm having a nice discussion.
Madam President, you should be speaking to the council as a whole, not to the
Madam President, you should be speaking to the council as a whole, not to the...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then how about this? I'll speak to council as a whole. The planning commissioner needs to be aware that there was some, but planning has to do with housing. Bill Hui, Fair Housing, was here yesterday with somebody in Janice Han's district. There seems to be a problem with the rent escrow inspectors cracking down on the property owners, what is seen to be illegal, and a racket of which will be a lawsuit. And I don't think that Janice is unaware of it. So you might want to say, gee, Ms. Han, please release all property owners from the rent escrow program. Because it's a classic lawsuit. And so, no, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay. Are you on topic?
Yes, I'm on topic. We're talking about planning and housing is planning and there's problems for Janice Han with the rent escrow.
Otherwise, I'm going to have to take your mic.
Otherwise, I'm going to sue your ass at court again.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you. Yes, and yeah, Tom Labange, his permit system had lost in court, so he shouldn't be interfering with the public comment here. He really doesn't understand federal law at all, neither do his attorneys. And we proved that. Now, look, let me get on to this because I'm, I just don't want to be interrupted. I want, this is probably the biggest one in the city that I want to talk about now. The future of the city of Los Angeles lies right here with this Commissioner. Because here's what we need to do, is go to Obama and get $20 billion and build a big tunnel from the airport out into the east here with federal money. They just sent $600 billion. They bought a bunch of pointless securities from Goldman Sachs and Wall Street. So they've got the money, get $20 billion from the federal government, and build a tunnel so we can ship all of America's goods and get the trucks off the freeways.
So I'm going to have to ask you to get back on topic, please, about the Commissioner in front of us.
The trucks coming on the freeways is not part of the Harbor Area Planning Commission. I'm talking about the big picture. Now, you said, I heard the Olympics were a great success here because they took all the trucks off the freeways, right? So let's do that permanently with a big project that employs people, gets the city moving again. Let's get stimulus money, build a giant tunnel, and get the trucks out of the city and get them out to where they, get them out to Arizona.
Okay, thank you, off topic. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Let's open the roll on this item, please. There's no more speaker cards. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item will be Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes, item 18.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I want to thank you. You supported the city in looking at how we address a large solar panel array that's being erected on the hillside of northeast Los Angeles. We instructed orders to comply and to stop work. We've been working with Broadview, been working with community folks. Essentially, colleagues, Los Angeles is at a critical juncture. On the one hand, we have been working aggressively to incentivize solar and other forms of renewable energy. At the same time, communities have been fighting to preserve open space and fight over development that has been inequitably distributed throughout the city for decades. The state has set out guidelines that instruct local jurisdictions to permit solar panels administratively, meaning that they are done over the counter at the various city departments with absolutely no city council oversight. That is why, back in July 1st, we co-authored, I co-authored along with Councilman Garcia, asking the planning department to draft a local ordinance with regard to solar panels. It needs to address permitting questions that arise in sensitive areas such as hillsides, historic preservation overlay zones, and open space, while at the same time, streamlining the process in those areas where solar energy is most appropriate. I strongly believe that cities' incentives should help direct solar panel arrays into areas that have already been mapped as hotspots with the best potential generate, to generate solar power. We have this information available to us, courtesy of UCLA and the Los Angeles Business Council, and there are primarily large rooftops in industrial and commercial areas. What you have before us, colleagues, is the action to lift the stop order, but in its place, move two motions that should be at your desk, 18A and 18B. In 18A, we are asking the council to consider an interim control ordinance to prohibit ground-mounted solar arrays in very high fire hazard severity zones. So that would be an amending motion. We have already started working with a group that's in place, made up of the planning department, building and safety, fire department, Department of Water and Power, city attorney, council districts 1 and 13, to begin drafting a local zoning ordinance. We'll be seeking input from outside groups, experts and community stakeholders. City staff is working diligently to create an ordinance, but in the meantime, we'd like to see us halt the ground-mounted solar arrays in very high fire hazard severity zones. The spirit of our Northeast Hillside Protection Ordinance is to protect these hills from overdevelopment and excessive lot coverage. I believe the solar arrays are contradictory to those goals and should not be exempted from hillside protection areas. When this first came to council, we requested Building and Safety institute an early notification system so we can be made aware of additional projects that may be in the pipeline throughout the city. So with that, I'd like to ask Building and Safety, if they could come to the table and give us a status on that.
Mr. Reyes, you want to take public comment cards first? What would you prefer?
Well, let us go through this process and go through the question.
Very well, Building and Safety's center table.
Please. So that way, in the public comment, they can be aware of what we're doing, hopefully address some of the issues. Building and Safety here?
Yeah, he's on the side right here.
We also ask Department of Water and Power staff, they can come to the table, because that refers to 18B. And in 18B, we essentially are asking for the feasibility report back on the feasibility of a virtual net metering on the sun shares program as a method to relocate the panels for the Broadview project. So 18B, colleagues, allows us to look at how we can create an infrastructure, a system that allows us to implement a system of virtual net metering where remote location is set aside for the purpose of accommodating ratepayer-owned or lease renewable energy generation when onsite generation is not feasible due to location or other constraints. As the city moves to increase local solar, I think this will be an important tool to allow equal access for property owners installed solar. Department of Water and Power should begin investigating a comprehensive program, but for now, I would like to request an immediate location to be found to accommodate Broadview solar array and give the credit for the energy created. But colleagues, Broadview has written a letter, provided four conditions where they can immediately respond to the impact of their facility. In the meantime, we're asking Department of Water and Power to investigate, report back to see if we can create a nexus with this site specifically, but in general, look at a system and explore that, report back and see what we can do to move this forward. So with that, perhaps on 18B, if you can speak to what you see at this moment, and then I'll ask Building and Safety to come to the table, if I may. Thank you. Please?
I'm John Dennis, the Director of Power System Planning with LADWP. And you're asking us to look at the virtual net metering as a possible solution for this particular item.
Right. On this one site, and then in general, citywide.
Again, virtual net metering allows for retailing electricity throughout the infrastructure of the city. And at this time, we don't have that mechanism in place. That may be something in the future that we would expect. So right now, at this time, we don't have that provision. We would have to look at that further with the city attorney's office and what would be necessary to allow for either general or for this specific application.
I appreciate it. I understand we're at the embryonic stages, but we need to start taking those steps to create this infrastructure in hopes that constituents around Broadview could someday see relief and move that, if possible. But in the meantime, that mitigation. But currently, we need to have that discussion with city attorney and with your staff to see how we can put together the building blocks to create such a system, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So anything else you'd like to add to that, or anybody on the table?
We have been working with the fire department and with the developer and staff. Certainly, as you have noted, DWP does have a goal to encourage, to incentivize, and to promote solar energy here in the city. And we will continue to work with the developer, with the owner, and with the fire department to address those fire hazard concerns while also maximizing the output of those proposed solar panels and see if that still is a feasible solution for that location.
Okay. Colleagues, you said, and I'll ask Building and Safety to come to the table. In terms of the status, we requested an early notification system. Can you give us a status on what projects are in the pipeline for that, so my colleagues can be aware of the volume that we're speaking to?
Bob Steinbach, Department of Building and Safety. As to any projects that come forward with solar energy, we can certainly categorize those, we can put them on our website, we can notify each council office, you know, every district that it's involved with, let them know that these are coming down the pipeline, that's not a problem. We can implement that immediately.
Great. Do we have a number ballpark of what you think is in the pipeline?
I'd have to go back and look at it. I don't know what the number is right now. Of significant projects like this, this is it. We don't have any other large projects in the pipeline right now.
So we happen to be the first?
Right.
Wow, that feels, that's why we're here today. So that being said, I want to thank you for your hard work. And colleagues, again, I ask that we lift the work order, the ban, we allow the project to move forward, they'll mitigate. We have 18A and B to deal with our challenge. We should know we've asked the state, thanks to your support, on a resolution in which we can have, essentially, the ability to promote this industry, but at the same time, allow for the city's local land use controls when appropriate to order and prevent abuses. So hopefully, the state can respond to this challenge and allow us to move forward and essentially embrace this industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, public comment cards. Maria Leong, Jack Finn, Mark Zandell Waterson, in that order. Do you like to make comment? We have public comments, cars, would you like to make a comment? State your name, please.
Marie Leong. I live on Mount Washington. I look directly across at the solar panels, and I am very unhappy with them. I can't, you know, fight against the aesthetics of it, but I did go on the internet, and I do, I'm here to support the findings of the Los Angeles Fire Department on the dangers of solar panels. I looked up at the Fireman's Forum on the internet, and they said that solar panels cannot be shut down. They are always energized, up to 600 volts of DC current, and users don't put water on them. The panels are often into a combination box, which takes all the energy and sends it to a disconnect box. The disconnect box takes the energy and sends it to the inverter, which converts the DC current to AC current. And it goes into the electric system. If you kill the energy at the disconnect box, anything up to that box is still energized. The solar panels, the combination box, the line going from the combination box into the structure and into the disconnect box are all still energized. It went on to state on the Fireman's Forum that even at, if it's nighttime, the solar panels, which have not been exposed to direct sunlight for several hours, are still energized and can kill you. It is estimated that panels would need to be covered with a tarp for seven to 10 days before the panels will be de-energized down to low levels. And someone asked on the forum, since California is number one when it comes to solar panel insulation, they asked, what do the firefighters do when the structured fire involves these systems? The answer is, they let them burn. Now, I am very worried about the hillside. I'm worried about the firemen, if they should come near these solar panels to put them out. I don't want them getting electrocuted or burnt. I don't want our hillside to burn. We bought our house back in 1965 because of the beautiful Arroyo, the beautiful hillsides, which are turning green now. And I just want them downsized or put into a different location.
Thank you very much. Jack Finn?
Members of the council, my name is Jack Finn, and I'm a Montecito Heights resident and an advocate for remaining open space. Virtual net metering, I believe, will have to happen. By now, you're all aware that the city has no real discretion over the size and location of solar arrays. Back in 1978, when the California Solar Rights Act was passed, we did not have sophisticated photovoltaic panels, nor did we have the huge money of oil giants, multinational solar panel producers and speculators combining with lucrative subsidies. The pressure is on, and it's building very rapidly. Eventually, utilities will be required to pay back excess production at peak rates. This is probably good. We need to incentivize alternative energy sources. If I put a PV array on my roof, of course, I would want the best return on my investment. But, and this is the big but, I should not be able to build at the expense of my community. I should not use up our rare open hillsides or an otherwise protected ridgeline. I should not build something that, in overall width and height, I could not otherwise place there. So I'm not the one to worry about. It's the big guys with their money and lobbyists who have the clout to block discretion and balance. It's time to restore balance to a very needed energy situation. In 1978, it was not, it was, I'm sorry, it was hot water heaters on the roof. Today, the sky's the limit. Balance, I say, and save our open spaces in the process. Thank you.
Mark Zandell Waterson. All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Michael Fisher. And following Michael Fisher will be Carl Dawson. Is Carl Dawson here? Carl, you going to wave your time? All right, all right. All right, Mr. Fisher.
I'm Michael Fisher, the Executive Director of Broadview Christian Science Nursing Facility. And as I should say, we're really dedicated to both improving the environment through this project, but also addressing the concerns that have been raised by the community and by the councilmen. And I just want to let you know, we look forward to working with the council office and the city council to mitigate their concerns. So thank you so much, and I ask you to support the measure. Councilman Reyes is introduced.
Dwayne Abdo? Okay, Dwayne's waiting his time. Dr. Williams? Following Dr. Williams will be Ankar Patel.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena, Northeast LA. The hillsides, we want to protect them. However, somewhat like Measure B, we're not against solar. We're against solar on this particular hillside because there's a lot of roofs in the vicinity of the proposed project, which could easily provide a lot of solar panels, maybe 100,000 square feet. But for this one particularly, the applicant has indicated that the fire department is too generalized. So I have submitted an additional backup for the fire department as to this particular project, this particular area. But there's a larger issue. I've looked at it for my own house, 1,000 square foot, and I was going to do it, except for one thing. I have to open a building and safety permit, and that means I have to go back and bring everything in my house up to code because I'm going to put a roof on. So you might say, if you want to make it easy for the small people, hey, work with building and safety. However, for this project, it is a fire hazard. It influences the safety of Deb's Park, the Broadview itself, and the adjacent housing. So I'd highly recommend that send it back and make it right this time so that the firefighters and fire equipment and the adjacent residents can be safe from the fire hazard. There's also a matter that Broadview seems to have a problem with complying with the tree trimming ordinance for the brush clearance section. As to how close the trees can be to a structure, especially for a medical structure, seems kind of strange. Thank you.
Mr. Patel?
The initial reason why I filled out a card on this was, I was wondering why this specific property got put on the agenda, right? The DWP gets something... The DWP gets something like 150 applications a week, solar incentives, but Councilman Reyes pointed out, this is the biggest facility. How many installed megawatts is it? Can I ask that? Do you know that off the top of your head? No? Does anybody know how many megawatts is actually installed on this project?
And so if you would address the council, please.
Six and a half megawatt project. Okay, that's pretty big. So now, the question comes about cost, right? Incentives. And I was just at the DWP incentive program, and they're gonna tap on the brakes, in their own words, tap on the brakes of this incentive program, because certain installers are having to wait 18 months before they get their incentive checks, because they've been misbudgeted. Unfortunately, that's not an uncommon theme in this city. Misappropriations of funds, well, that's a little bit more legal. But, so let me just generalize about the whole system, right? We got about $300 million from the Solar Roofs Initiative, right? The Million Solar Roofs Initiative. $30 million a year for 10 years. First couple of years, we were under, under that $30 million. And suddenly, it's gone vertical, right? The exponential curve. We started to hit it, and that means we don't have, we're above that $30 million a year. So now, we can't pay out the incentives. People have to wait a long time. So now, is this project going to be fast-forwarded to the front of the line in terms of those incentives? These kinds of questions come up when you talk about a specific project that's huge, and why is it on the agenda? And who got it put there? And is this going to get preferential treatment over the solar panels that are gonna be put on my parents' home? You know, things like that. And unfortunately, I go back to the, this is a city that favors the politically connected.
Mr. Reyes.
After the gentleman's question, the solar panel system that is rated with a capacity of 128,707 kilowatt-hours per year on the system, I know they're not gonna be favored. They're gonna be part of the process. They'll be in line to address that concern.
All right, no further speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Oh. Mr. Reyes, did you press your button one more time?
Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to share with you that, and answer some of the questions. With the ICO, we could essentially stop all the projects so that we can assess the impacts on open space throughout the city, on historic corridors. So the ICO addresses those concerns, as well as with, that was 18A and 18B essentially sets forth a directive to begin implementing a system that allows us to work with net metering arrangement with the property. So eventually, when the system's in place, we can see those panels go away over time. So thank you.
Okay. Would you open the roll, please, on this item?
Pardon me. Madam President, for clarification, council has motions 18A and 18B before them.
Okay, then can we open the roll on the item as amended? Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
All right. Without objection, please open the roll on that item 18 as amended by 18A and 18B. And I'll close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. All right, next items we take will be 12 and 13. Mr. Rosendahl, there are cards on these items. If you would like to take them first?
Sure, why not?
All right, let's call it.
You don't tie them together, they're separate.
All right, well then, let's go with 12 first. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker on item 12. Leah Ross is the second speaker, and Aaron Glenn. And if Leah Ross is closer to the mic than Mr. Sacks, she can come up first. Where's Leah Ross? You can come up first. Whoever gets here first can speak. And then Aaron Glenn. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Leah Ross, and I represent the Border Grove Truck. We have a brick and mortar restaurant, as well as a gourmet taco truck. We don't belong to any truck associations. We want to see a reasonable and viable solution to the issues with food trucks in Los Angeles, and we think that solution will come with continued communication, research, and goodwill between the truck community, Department of Transportation, LAPD, Health Department, and City Council. With the assistance of the city attorney's office, we hope the council can address any public safety issues with food trucks without adversely affecting the longstanding tradition of lonchero trucks in Los Angeles, and while embracing the new gourmet food truck culture as a positive addition to what makes Los Angeles a culinary destination.
Arnold Sacks, you're next.
Reminder. Thank you. Good morning. Just out of curiosity, will this ordinance reflect any kind of assistance for the businesses that are affected? Because they have to pay the overhead of a building. How will that accommodate those small businesses? You're always talking about how you're being pro-business active. On one hand, you have mobile trucks that don't have to worry about that overhead. They don't have to necessarily, as you've heard maybe from the Art Walk discussion, where groups of people accumulate, that they don't have to really worry about the cleanup necessarily, cleanup be afforded as part of their ability to park someplace. It's not just the service of food. It's a full venture here, from the start to finish. The advertising they can do online, the advertising they can do on the trucks. But after they serve the food, what happens then? And again, the overhead that small businesses face, you heard from the renters and the renters' associations when you had the leased, the moratorium on the rent increase, there was different sides to that fight. So this is a different-sided fight also, and I'm wondering just how strictly you've looked into this whole situation. More often than not, from numerous other times of being here in the council, it's your leadership from behind that never ceases to amaze me. Thank you.
Erica Glenn or Aaron Glenn?
Hi, thank you for hearing this item. And I work for the Asociación de Loncheros, and, thank you. We represent the traditional side of this industry. People who have been working and operating their trucks for 30-plus years. I mean, they started this industry. And so, our hope is to continue working with City Hall to celebrate this street food renaissance that Los Angeles is experiencing right now, without marginalizing a population of people that have been working and contributing to the respective communities that they operate in for many, many years. And I'd also like to ask, just to kind of address the concerns of the gentleman before me, in terms of overhead and, you know, differences between restaurants and trucks. There is actually, there are differences, but they're not as stark as many people believe. And I really hope that City Council can review some of the literature that is out there now and take some of these things into consideration. Trucks have to park at commissaries. They pay thousands of dollars a month sometimes just to house their trucks. I mean, there is a considerable economic impact that they face as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rosendahl.
And just real quickly, folks, we've been, this is a work in progress. We'll get a final report back in 60 to 90 days. There's six recommendations. If I could ask city staff real quickly to come up and go through a few of these points. But folks, this is an issue that impacts several areas pretty intensely right now. One is, as Mr. Labange will comment on, the Miracle Mile on Wilshire Boulevard. We in the 11th District have issues with the Abbott-Kenny in Venice, and how that can be properly put together. Town also has Largemont Boulevard. And there are other various residential neighborhoods throughout the city where food trucks have been popping up. With our new social media strategies, people are tweeting each other, and everybody has a following. And you can put a bunch of trucks in a given area, and there'll be lots of people there to enjoy the food. It works easily when it's in industrial areas, and it's not impacting a brick and mortar restaurant. And there's also issues of parking and using more than one space, and not paying it, and then the ticket issues. So we have six recommendations that have come together in the process that will be sent back for more refining. And if I could ask staff to give us a quick overview of what we have in front of us.
Mr. President, Paul Smith from the CLA's office. Yeah, this, mobile food vending trucks have a long history in Southern California. It has grown from, what the councilman says, from limited food options in remote areas to service of exotic foods, alternative menus in high-density urban areas. Of course, this will cause conflicts in times, mainly around parking. And also, they will serve same locations as brick and mortar establishments, so there are conflicts there. Your committee heard some motions from council members on these, on this matter. And that, this was back in August. You asked our office in connection with, and with the support and cooperation of other city departments, affected departments, to come back and take a look at this and give you an interim report about some solutions of moving forward. And as you said, this is a work in progress. We're not, we're looking at avenues to move forward on that have opportunities to expand on. Because we are limited on what we can do relative to regulating a mobile food truck, the city attorney came to us and said, "Look, why don't we do a permit system? Let's start looking at a permit system, and using public safety issues as..."
Okay. On that note, let's let the city attorney give us the six recommendations quickly, college, so you can get the gist of where we're taking this. But it will be a work in progress. Could you outline them to us?
I can, I can. Mr. Chairman, I mean, the recommendation we are putting forward today is, one is a request that the city attorney with the coordination of the Bureau of Street Services, CLA, the CAO, Department of Finance, to develop an ordinance establishing a mobile food truck permit process. That would include a one-page document that will serve as a guide in conducting such businesses in the city of Los Angeles to be distributed to the truck owners when they get their business license. Two would be to instruct LAPD and LA DOT, working with the city attorney, to conduct a training program for the police officers and parking enforcement personnel on the existing laws surrounding catering trucks and parking and their activities. Three is also an instruction to LA DOT to report on current policy related to the limiting of the issuance of parking citations one vehicle per day. And I'll come back again to you for a report on that. Four would be the, request the city attorney to prepare and present the necessary implementing ordinance for the new Los Angeles County Mobile Truck Rating Plan. In order for the county to implement that program in the city, to be operable in the city, it needs an ordinance from your body. Also, we are asking that you direct the CLA to establish, and this is really important, to have all the stakeholders involved, to establish a mobile food truck task force comprised of the Los Loncheros, Southern Cal Mobile Food Vendors Association, the LA County Department of Health, LAPD, LAFD, LA DOT, planning, Bureau of Street Services, and Office of Finance, the mayor's office, BIDs, neighborhood councils.
Yeah, and we know the neighborhood council, folks, are very interested in it. The Venice Neighborhood Council would ask.
And representative council offices that have a...
Okay. Now, can we tie it into the county and work in a cooperative effort? So it's a county-city thing? Why not? So let's report back on how we get the county and the city together on the same wavelength.
Clearly, we're gonna be working with our county partners on this and coordinating our efforts with them.
Yeah, and as the county goes forward with rating them for quality of food, AVCD, that will also be part of the process.
Right, right. And actually, we have representative county here today who can talk about public health safety issues.
Very good. Real quickly, Judy, do you want to add something?
Just, Judith Reel, deputy city attorney, just two points. One, technical matter, LAPD would not necessarily be involved in enforcement. Again, would be LA DOT. And depending on what kind of permitting system council chose to impose, if any, we actually envision that that might be administered by the Bureau of Street Services. But that's a matter that will be taken up in the future. I think it's important, just to sort of to frame the argument or to frame council's consideration, the city is allowed to regulate mobile food trucks for public safety. The city is allowed to regulate the time, place, and manner of vending from vehicles for public safety. The city cannot regulate mobile food trucks for the purpose of equalizing the competitive balance between brick and mortar and mobile food trucks. The city can certainly offer incentives to brick and mortar restaurants if the city believes that that would be warranted. However, the purpose of regulating mobile food trucks is limited to public safety.
Right. And the county, could you please comment? Welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Terrence Powell, I'm with the Department of Public Health. My real purpose is really to encourage the council to move forward on a motion to adopt the grading ordinance, which is an expansion of the existing restaurant ordinance that your city adopted about 12 years ago. Our board adopted and approved it on October 19th. It becomes effective on November 18th. Los Angeles being one of the first cities that adopted the restaurant grading ordinance, I would hope that you would also be one of the first in the county family to do the same with mobile vending. I think the real benefit of grading is to empower consumers to make wise consumer choices based on objective findings from our inspections. I, secondly, think that it will also serve to allow consumers to differentiate legal and permitted and otherwise safely operating mobile vehicles from those that are unlicensed and operating unsafely.
And saying that, Madam President and colleagues, what that means is that we're incorporating that. It's a no-brainer for us to obviously do the rating in as we go forward with the city attorney's report back to us, with that being part of what the ordinance would be. Because we appreciate your leadership.
And actually, council member, if council requests my office to draft that ordinance, I would expect to come back just on that piece alone much sooner.
Very good. And we could move forward, if we move forward on this whole thing today, much sooner to be in complement with the county and to provide that leadership for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd also offer one thing, if I could, is that the county does have a task force that we have formed, which is going to convene next week, which is composed of many of the stakeholders that are referenced in the report that was just outlined. Our purpose is really to look at conflict and offer recommendations to our board on that basis.
And Madam President, with that in mind, the county, that's why we need to move quickly in joining the county on that task force. And I just want to make sure you know that both Venice and West LA want to be part of that. But West LA is. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We have three more speakers, Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Caress. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam City Attorney, for this report. On number five, you are interested in neighborhood, I want to notify all neighborhood councils. Mr. Smith, write that down, please. I said this in committee, but it wasn't transmitted. Add the city council, members, I ask that your deputies be involved with this wherever way they can. Also, try to create a food truck zone. This was rejected, I think, a little by the Department of Transportation. And I want to see a creation of a food truck zone. I don't want them near Trilights, which is a traffic signal. I don't want them near crosswalks, which prevents visibility. But I think we could work it out. And we've been working with everybody to find solutions so we could agree to that issue. And I think it's real important that you add that. Direct DOT to remove safety issues as far as the height of the vehicles and the flap that comes up on the street. This type of thing is very important. The size of the vehicles, and how it fits into space. And again, if it needs to create it. DOT fought hard to expand parking meter zones. And in these zones, they're there to be created. And how they're defined and used is important. And how long someone could sit there. Also, examine the issue that's stated here with the policy relating to limit the issuance of parking citations, one per vehicle, to make sure that's consistent. This is an unwritten policy. I've never seen the written policy. But let's define that so that we make sure we're on legal ground. Also, direct public works to sort of the impacts when vehicles sit on the street, whatever creates the, and they are very clean, all of them, the loncheros, everyone, clean up their area, but what impact it may have from a public works aspect on that. And are they allowed to put tables and chairs? Are they allowed to put ironing boards, believe it or not? And what else could they add to? Members, this is an opportunity to do the right thing, to be able to create a space that matches and balances the needs of everybody in our... And I do ask, there's a very important point in here, that it looks at the zoning issues as it relates to safety. Safety is extremely important. So with that being said, I think the city attorney said it best, that we could move forward on these issues, that we'll all come back. And Mr. Rosendahl, I thank you and your staff for your help on this, and I think I want to ask all those who participated in the public hearings in this, thank you. It's a continual discussion here, that we must do the right thing as we see this transformation and a balance if necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, colleagues, this great city has many different cultures. It has many different idiosyncrasies in how it survives. I can point to you a taco truck that I've known for 20 years in Highland Park. I can point to one in Lincoln Heights that I've known for almost 25 years. And they're there because they have customers. No one's been poisoned, no one's died, but it is a gathering point for a large number of people who otherwise would probably find this the most nutritious food, because they don't want to go to the fast foods. They'd rather have fresh meat, fresh vegetables for a dollar, a taco. So when you look at these types of facilities, I'm hoping that we do not inadvertently eliminate them, because we've, because we need to respond to those who are not playing by the rules, who are being opportunistic, and who are putting people's lives in danger. So I understand that priority. But there is a balancing point. What I'd like to hear, and this be a verbal amendment, Councilor Rosendahl, is if we can use the mapping systems of the planning department and start defining locations based on public safety. So there are certain facilities, these taco trucks that are creating traffic, they're backing out, people are double parking, that's a danger because of the physical elements. But also, there are some taco trucks that have been there for 20 years, 10 years. How do we treat them? Do we just kick them out? Do we consider, can they prove they've been there for so many years? Can we look at a documentation process that gives them that sense of legitimacy, if you will, based on their presence? A mechanism allows us to facilitate that, because there are certain parts of town where they've become part of the fabric, part of the landscape, and I don't see anyone upset about their presence. So there is that balancing point that we, I think, need to achieve, because there is, there are thousands of people out there who are surviving within the structure of the sub-economy. And that needs to be, I believe, understood.
And I'll take that as a friendly motion, and I'll second that to be part of the report back.
Thank you very much, seconded by Mr. Rosendahl. Excellent. We have one more speaker, Mr. Carez.
I want to thank the city attorney and DOT for all their hard work on a complex issue so far. In my district at least, where the problem is, it's primarily an enforcement issue. We still have some of these vehicles in permit parking areas, where we know they violate the law every day, and we don't do the enforcement. Or if we do the enforcement, it's still not enough to hit them hard enough. What, what I would ask again, that we look at, is treating people differently if they are actually in their vehicle and refusing to move once they've been sighted. And perhaps we can put a regulation in that allows us to either continue to cite throughout the day, or even better, to cite them with a higher fine for refusal to move. That would solve some of this problem directly. I also, in my district, I'm starting to have a couple spots pop up that are similar to Councilmember Labange's, not in the frequency, and, you know, we don't see 15 or 20 vehicles back-to-back in a certain area. But we have a couple spots where two or three of them are showing up, they're, they're parking in a space that they don't fit in, so they should get sighted, and they are actually blocking a brick-and-mortar restaurant, so they're not visible at the same time, and close to putting, in one case, somebody out of business. So I think a lot of this could be done with, with more of a focus on enforcement, and I hope we can, we can figure out a way to do that. At the same time, you know, I appreciate DOT and city attorney recognizing that these kinds of catering trucks are part of Los Angeles, they just need to operate responsibly, and hopefully, we can all survive in this circumstance together.
Mr. Labange.
Just to articulate, we're one of 88 cities in this county. Make sure that the task force looks at all the other municipalities. What impacts Santa Monica happens in Venice and vice versa, Culver City, other parts. And look at Pacific Avenue, which I think is one of the most dynamic streets in our region, and Huntington Park, and the revitalization there. See how that balances out. And again, members, just to let you know, if these vehicles are not in the public street, that's not the issue here. The issue is the public street and how they balance it out. And I appreciate what Mr. Reyes said about long-term people, and that's, and I remember them when I worked for John, and those are the people that I think I worked with most to try to create whatever compromise we're coming forth with on the side streets off the Wilshire Center, Corea Town area. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl has added, yes, thank you, added a friendly amendment to the action, and there's no objection to that. So let's open a roll on that item, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Mr. Rosendahl, you asked for 13 to go next, and we have two speaker cards on that.
Thank you, sir. That'd be great.
First speaker on item 13 will be Matthew Dowd, followed by Ted Rogers. Matthew Dowd, followed by Ted Rogers. Is Mr. Rogers still here? Okay, come on up, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yes, and interesting enough, I am a cyclist in the city of Los Angeles every day, but I don't ride on the main streets or anywhere away from Venice, so I'm probably not qualified to talk about some of the things that happen, but, you know, I think you're nuts riding a bike on the streets, you know, any of these major boulevards or where there's big trucks, and it's one of my issues, and that's why I'm upset you stopped me. I'm trying to get some of the trucks off the streets, so there's more room for all the cyclists, we have less problems. Some of these people here can get jobs and housing, and everything can get back on track. But I don't believe you should be giving the power to cyclists to get into more trouble than they're already getting into, because that's what these things end up doing. People think the police are going to protect them, and they're not.
If Speaker, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm Ted Rogers. I write biking in LA, and I'm a board member of the LA CBC. I want to make sure that you all understand the importance of this measure. Every day, cyclists face a barrage of harassment and threats. I receive reports of riders being crowded, yelled at, honked at, things thrown at them, forced off the road. I've heard of female cyclists who have to endure unwanted sexual comments and touching. Some people complain about rude cyclists making gestures and swearing. But what you have to understand is that words and gestures have been our only means to defend ourselves up to this point. And as Dr. Thompson showed, no word or gesture can protect a cyclist from an angry driver in a two-ton car. The police are here to protect us, but they can't be everywhere, and few people will do these things when there's a cop around. This ordinance, proposed ordinance, is a brilliant solution to the problem, and the first of its kind anywhere. It gives cyclists the tools to defend ourselves, even if there's no cop around. More importantly, it will act as a deterrent to protect the city's most vulnerable road users, and encourage more people to get out of their cars and on the bikes. It will save lives. And overnight, it will change LA from bicycling backwater to the leader in protecting cyclists. It will be copied by cities around the world. I have already received numerous requests from cyclists in other cities for a copy of the city attorney's report on this measure. That's what you'll be voting on in a few minutes. And yes, it is every bit that important.
Thank you very much. No further speaker cards, Mr. Rosendahl.
I had a, Madam President, I had to thank and shake his hand, because his articulation is exactly what the story is. I first came across a young cyclist whose face was completely messed up, and it was another hit-and-run, another harassment situation. And when I saw that guy's face, I said that Alex Thompson had a bicycle shop situation. I went and spoke before. Staff, come on up real quickly, and let's do a quick discussion of this. Amir, come on up. Let's, let's do this. Colleagues, this just gives the cyclists rights that they should automatically have. It allows them, and we'll have the city attorney explain it, to sue somebody who hurts them on the road. We also, of course, are pleased that the mayor's going to support what I've been talking about for a while, the three-foot passing rule, which is another issue that requires state legislation. So can I ask staff to give us a quick report on what's before us?
Sure. Deputy City Attorney Judith Reel, we were asked to work with the Department of Transportation, and Michelle Maury, from the DOT, is here, and we, to prepare a report discussing how to prevent the harassment of bicyclists in the city. And we considered actions that bicyclists frequently complain about, and determined that those were already prohibited, they already constituted legal violations. And so we suggested that the city council consider adopting an ordinance that would create a civil cause of action for bicyclists who are unlawfully harassed. The ordinance could provide that bicyclists who sue and prevail would be awarded punitive damages and attorney's fees. Bicycles today who are assaulted can sue today, and they can sue for damages. The difference is, is that attorney's fees are not provided for under law. Our ordinance could do that, and that would provide an incentive for bicyclists to sue in appropriate situations where, thank goodness, they haven't been catastrophically injured. So it otherwise wouldn't make economic sense to sue. And it would go in a section of the LAMC that already creates other civil causes of action and has the same, provides for the same remedies.
Thank you. Michelle, give us a quick update from your perspective.
I just, well, absolutely, what Ted Rogers said is absolutely right on. We have all kinds of problems. Motors still believe bicyclists do not belong on the roadway, and we're frequently harassed. People find it entertaining and sport to throw things, spit, hit, yell at, honk at, to essentially knock people off their bicycles. So we absolutely need something like this that's going to support bicycles and their rights to use the roadway.
And it does have some teeth in it, doesn't it? In terms of like $1,000? Explain that.
Well, the, the teeth, one would be the attorney's fees and punitive damages provision, and then there was a motion in, in the Transportation Committee that was adopted, I mean, it's before council, to establish a minimum damages recovery, and again, of $1,000. And this is consistent with other provisions in the Muni Code that create civil causes of action.
Thank you very much. Your colleagues, questions obviously and comments to make, but this again, gives rights to the cyclists, what they should have, and it helps us deal with the issues on the road. That's it. Thank you. I'd like you, I vote.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to ask you a question. Cycling is very, very, very important. On sidewalks, people ride on sidewalks. And I was looking, and I was thinking, how could we help from a safety aspect? Because now we're dealing with the motors in the street, now the pedestrian who's walking down the street, and there's a cycle on there. I was going to ask you, and is there any coalition here today? Los Angeles County Bike Coalition?
Unless they've come in a last few moments.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, I got that. I asked, and I see this in Europe and other places, where they have bells on bikes, where people ring bells on bikes. I'm concerned about pedestrians, so I want to ask the coalition, work with the coalition, possibly to come up with a concept for bells on bikes, that a little bell would be rung, so people know, and that you pass on one side or the other. Because I think the great energy that is being created by cycling is so important, but at the same time, many people are using the sidewalk, as we're talking about the street here, all these things are important. What's your opinion? Michelle, you're a Long Beach to Los Angeles rider.
Well, so certainly, the city currently has an ordinance that requires bicyclists to not use the sidewalks with a willful or wanton disregard for persons or property, and I'm quoting there, which I think means that bicyclists would need to be safe around pedestrians. If we really want to talk about how bicyclists use the sidewalk, the California Vehicle Code delegates authority to local cities to pass ordinance to determine how sidewalks are used by bicyclists, or if they are at all. What we could do is revise the current ordinance to make the language very clear that Seattle's ordinance currently says that if bicyclists hit a pedestrian, they are at fault, and we could...
And what does Seattle do to inform the pedestrian that bikes are now sharing, we're sharing the road, but we're sharing the sidewalk, same space? And when you enter a street, does the bike have to stop entering the street for the sidewalk, or could it roll directly into the street?
They could roll directly to...
It's illegal to do that?
It's not illegal to do so.
Because there's safety issues that I want everybody to go home safe. So we'll have more discussion, and look forward to working with the coalition, what could be developed. But thank you for these steps, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. When we look at fines, the amount, $1,000, are we familiar with, what do we usually fine for $1,000?
It's not a fine.
Is there...
Councilmember, I know the report refers to a fine, but a fine is something, for example, that the city imposes as punishment. That is not what this will do. This does not create a criminal cause of action that the city will enforce. It would create a civil cause of action that a bicyclist could enforce. The city will not be involved in enforcement. So the $1,000 is really referring to a minimum damages recovery. The other ordinances in the LAMC, one establishes, I believe, a $250 minimum. The others that relate to housing have a minimum damages award of three times the monthly rent involved. And so depending on the monthly rent, you're easily talking about at least $1,000 minimum damages in those ordinances.
So it's the nature of the infraction...
Yes.
...that generates the quantity or the amount?
It's the ordinance, it, yes, it's the amount of damage that was suffered that generates the amount of damages that a court or jury would award, and this says, in no case would it be less than $1,000.
But it can go higher.
It can go higher, of course. If somebody were seriously injured by, by the actions, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that, because I want to make sure that we were imposing the kind of awareness that does reinforce safety, because sometimes people, in the heat of the moment, you know, can hurt a bicyclist, and hopefully, this will make them think twice. So thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, to close, as Mr. Krikorian, a bright attorney as well, as a council member here, this will be back to us in final form in how long?
I would hope 60 days.
Great. And if we could pull it off sooner, or 60, whatever, in the meantime, as you put it together for final draft, make sure the bicycle coalition get a look at it from that end. But we might take it to committee or waive it from committee. It depends upon where we are with that process on it. But thank you, colleagues. I think this is great. This allows us, of course, we need a vote from us all here, that this finally gives cyclists the respect and the opportunities to deal with the issue when somebody hits them and runs away from it. So I ask for an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, let's open the roll on that, close the roll, then tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon has asked me to take up 38 next, because many of the people here have taken a bus that is going to depart at 1:00 PM. And there are a number of speaker cards here for this item. Is that correct, Mr. Alarcon?
Yes.
All right. So given the number of speaker cards, I would recommend that we give them a minute per person to speak.
That would be fine.
All right. You want them to proceed first?
Just make introductory comments, so the colleagues will understand the context of what the speakers are speaking of. Councilmember Hahn and I introduced this motion because we became knowledgeable of evictions that occurred at public housing projects, one in my district and one in her district. We believe that those evictions were very questionable, and we are asking HACLA to come to, to tell us why these evictions occurred. In addition to that, many of the residents and others are here for public comment. So with that, I'd like to proceed with the public comment.
First speaker is Arnold Sacks. Is Mr. Sacks still here? Following Arnold Sacks will be Fernando Gaitan. Is Mr. Gaitan here? Mr. Gaitan, whoever gets up here first can speak first. Come on up, Mr. Gaitan. No, I didn't call your name. Mr. Gaitan. And following Mr. Gaitan will be Mr. Sacks.
Madam Chairperson, it's Fernando Gaitan from Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I'm an attorney with the Legal Aid, and today, along with our partners, Neighborhood Legal Services, we filed a lawsuit against the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles and Mr. Montiel, on behalf of 10... and Mr. Montiel on behalf of 10 public housing tenants who are facing eviction simply because of their participation in peaceful protest at the home of CEO Rudy Montiel. There were no arrests, there were no charges against these individuals, there were no citations. The tenants' demonstration was entirely peaceful. We are seeking an injunction against the evictions based on First and Fourteenth Amendment rights, violations that Mr. Montiel committed, as well as retaliatory eviction. These tenants were there trying to voice their opposition to Hackla's plan for disposition of all public housing, and we're not given an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
All right, Arnold Sacks.
Just thank you and thank you for your concerns. You waited, what, an hour and a half to have this item called up and now you're concerned about people wanting to leave because they have a bus to catch at 1:00? Very concerned. We really appreciate that. So that's the amount of concern you have for the people's time, just how much concern you have of this problem that seems to be pushed around. The city, in its wisdom, will be looking into these complaints. They should be looking into this whole authority to start with. There's a shady current of corruption through Hackla and it's been ongoing. There was an article in the newspaper yesterday about the homeless and the amount of money that's spent on services. It's just outrageous that it takes forever for these items to come up before the council and, again, your leadership from behind.
Sandra Obando, Sandra Obando, and then Joanne Harvey Dixon. Are Sandra Obando and Joanne Harvey Dixon still here?
She's been in the interpreter.
Gracias.
Okay, that's fine, we have right here. Right there.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Sandra Obando, vengo de San Fernando Garden.
Good morning, my name is Sandra Obando, I come from San Fernando Valley.
Voy a ser brevemente mi comentario por el tiempo.
I'm going to present my brief comments.
Quiero darle las gracias a todos los concejales que están aquí por el apoyo que nos están dando.
I want to thank all the council members that are here today for the support that they are giving us.
Estoy aquí porque quiero justicia, porque estamos en un país de democracia.
I'm here because I want justice, because we are in a democratic country.
Y queremos que la autoridad de la vivienda pare las intimidaciones que nos están haciendo.
We want that Housing Authority stops with the intimidation that they are giving us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joanne Harvey Dixon. Following her will be Mario Cervantes.
Hello, my name is Joanne Harvey Dixon and I'm a resident of Mar Vista Gardens and a power member for 11th district. I don't see my councilman, but I really wish he was out here, Councilman Rosendahl. Housing is a human right. Housing Authority residents across the city have joined together to stand to protect our housing rights. Fighting for justice is not a crime, but putting innocent families on the street is. Residents of public housing have the big issue that's called Section A conversion. Hackla has proposed a tenant impacement disposition for some, but one day all developments. Residents from the Housing Authority developments do not agree with Hackla's plan. There was a Hackla agency plan public hearing on August 12th. Not even half of the residents that were there were able to come in and give their feelings or comments. We have tried to set up meetings with the CEO, but we always get declines and send other Hackla staff that just gives us the runaround. We ask --
We have one minute each so that everybody can have a chance to speak. Mario Cervantes? Is Mario Cervantes here? And then Veronica Mendoza? Veronica Mendoza is here? Okay, great.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Cervantes.
Good afternoon, my name is Mario Cervantes.
I'm a resident of Mar Vista Gardens.
I reside --
Leader of Power.
Mar Vista Gardens.
Estamos aquí luchando por el derecho de una vivienda digna para nuestras familias.
We're here to fight for our right of fair housing for our --
Y esto de ningún modo es un acto criminal.
This is not a criminal act.
Para ser desalojados de nuestras viviendas.
To be removed from our housing.
Los dirigentes de Hackla deben entender que son servidores públicos.
The Hackla staff should know that they are public servants.
Y están para trabajar por los intereses y el bienestar de los residentes de la vivienda pública.
They are there to work for the welfare of the residents of public housing.
Estamos aquí solicitando el apoyo de las autoridades correspondientes.
We are here to request support from the authority, corresponding authority.
Para que se han respetado nuestros derechos.
For our rights to be respected.
La vivienda pública.
Thank you very much. Veronica Mendoza?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, councilmen, councilwomen, to be here. My name is Veronica again. I have some notes, I just don't want to go through my notes anymore after what I received. I received a message from an attorney from Housing Authority, John Durgess, and just now at 11:04 saying that they're going to put a restraining order against me to stay away from Montiel, from his house, from his work, from his family. I am not a threat. He is a threat to Housing Authority tenants. He is evicting me. He is evicting me because I went to protest, because I need questions, I have questions and he's not responding. He's not here. He sends his people, but they still do not respond. We, the tenants, have been asking months after months for an answer. What is Petra? What is the agency plan? What is it really going to do to us? What is disposition demolition? Where are we going to end up? We are low income. We are not a threat to him.
Rosa Roman, followed by Myra Garcia. Is Rosa Roman here? Myra Garcia, Myra Garcia, and Sandra Rivas, and Brendan Carey.
Hola, mi nombre es Rosa Roman y vengo de San Fernando Garden.
Hello, my name is Rosa Roman and I come from San Fernando Gardens.
Ojalá que esta mañana despertemos las conciencias de todos los aquí presentes y nos puedan ayudar.
I hope that this morning, the conscience of everybody that is here breaks up and can help us.
Porque no es justo que una sola persona, señor Montiel, nos esté marcando a todas las familias de las viviendas públicas.
It's not fair that just one person, Mr. Montiel, is doing this to the residents of public housing.
Somos residentes, somos ciudadanos.
We are residents, we are citizens.
Y tenemos derecho porque estamos en un país libre y democrático.
We have rights because we are in a free and democratic country.
Necesitamos que nos ayuden, por favor.
We need your help, please.
Que esto pare y que la nación se vaya arriba, pero con la gente honesta, correcta, que sabe lo que tenga que hacer.
This nation should be successful with honest people that knows what to do.
Myra Garcia?
Can we have more time for the translation, please? More time because she's being --
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Myra Garcia.
My name is Myra Garcia.
Soy miembro de Power.
I'm a member of Power.
Vivo en Mar Vista Garden.
I live in Mar Vista Gardens.
Estoy aquí porque necesito que escuchen nuestros comentarios.
I am here because we need you to hear, listen to our comments.
Nosotros necesitamos que nos den un respeto como nosotros lo respetamos a usted.
We need to be respected the same way that we respect you.
Porque sabemos que estamos en un país que amamos.
Because we know that we are in a country that we love.
Pero queremos también decirles que, por favor, paren esto de Sección 8.
But we also want to tell you to please stop Section 8.
Y los altos costos de la vivienda.
And the high prices of housing.
Porque ahorita en estas crisis, no podemos pagar demasiado.
With this crisis, we cannot pay too much.
Gracias por oírnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Sandra Rivas?
Hi, my name is Sandra Rivas. I'm here from Rancho San Pedro. I'm a power member and I'm here to support all tenants that continue to be fighting for their rights and here to show Montiel that I, that because he is evicting our fellow power member, public housing order tenants like wouldn't be able and be afraid to be here to come and express our anger. Montiel needs to be held accountable for all his actions and these tenants do not need to be evicted for enforcing freedom of their speech. By the way, I still do not understand what's Petra, what is what lawnmower is, what the agency plan truly means by disposition demolition and how can Hackla possibly be asked to ask for more funding from her with this tenants in place disposition?
Thank you. Brendan Corey?
My name is Brendan Carey and I would like to give my time to Joanne Harvey Dixon to finish her.
I can't give your time away, sir. If you don't wish to speak, you can leave your time.
Okay. Well, yeah, so I guess I'll just come here to say, I'm an organizer with Power. We want to point out that Rudy Montiel also is not here again today, something that we feel is, he, we can't, we've been trying to get a meeting with him for six months. We went to his house, even the council can't get a meeting with him. Where is this guy? He makes 500, he gets $500,000 a year in benefits, in benefits and salary. We, you know, we wonder if the city council just kind of dozed off as he was, had his finger on the zeros as he was filling in that salary, the check. And so we just want accountability, we want to be a part of this process to better our communities with Hackla. Thank you.
Ankar Patel. Mr. Patel, are you waving your right to speak? All right. Next speaker is Angelica Esquivel. And after Angelica will be Sarah Reyes.
Mi nombre es Angelica Esquivel y vivo en Rancho San Pedro y soy miembro de Power.
Good afternoon, my name is Angelica Esquivel. I live at Rancho --
San Pedro.
Rancho San Pedro and I am a member of Power.
Y estoy aquí con el propósito de que se nos escuche.
I'm here to be heard.
Y que nos respeten nuestros derechos Hackla.
And we want Hackla to respect our rights.
He vivido 19 años.
I lived for 19 years.
En Hackla.
At Hackla.
Y todo el tiempo no nos respeta nuestros derechos.
And we have never had our rights respected.
Cuando Aliso Village fue demolida, yo viví en esa vivienda por nueve años.
Yeah, when they demolished Aliso Village, I lived there for nine years.
Y también tomaron un proceso que nos llevaron a corte para poder desalojarnos cuando podían solamente reubicarnos.
And they also took us to court in order to take us out of our housing instead of just place us at another place, instead of relocating us. May I continue?
Go ahead, please. And complete it.
Es un proceso muy duro.
The process was very hard.
Y estoy pasando por el mismo proceso en este momento.
And right now, I'm going through the same process.
Porque soy uno de los residentes que está siendo desalojado nuevamente.
Because I'm one of the residents that once more I'm being evicted.
Por hacer escuchar mi voz.
Yes, for trying that they hear my voice.
Y no estoy queriendo la injusticia para toda la comunidad.
I don't want this kind of injustice for our community.
Espero que nuestros derechos sean escuchados y no permitan revisiones injustas.
I hope that they can respect our rights and you don't allow this.
Porque merecemos respeto.
Because we deserve respect.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sarah Reyes and then Louis Brooks. Is Louis Brooks still here? Come on up.
Buenas tardes a todas las personas aquí presentes.
Good afternoon to all of you that are here today.
Quiero dar gracias a las personas que nos están respetando con su ayuda.
I would like to thank the people that is supporting us.
Yo vengo de Rancho San Pedro.
I come from Rancho San Pedro.
Soy residente de Rancho por algunos años.
I lived there for several years.
Mi preocupación más que todo son por las personas de la tercera edad, así como yo.
My main concern is for senior citizens, just like me.
Yo quiero saber qué es lo que va, qué va a pasar con nosotros, las personas que abrimos nuestras bocas para exigir nuestros derechos.
I would like to know what is going to happen to us, to us that express, that express ourselves in order to, for you to hear our rights.
Ajá, y cuestionar a Housing Authority aunque nunca recibimos respuestas.
We try to question Housing Authority, but we never get an answer.
Porque siempre nos ignoran.
They always ignore us.
Quiero que sepa que nosotros, las personas mayores, estamos viviendo a un sueldo reducido de Seguro Social.
We senior citizens, we have a reduced salary from Social Security.
Vivimos con muchas privacidades.
We deprive ourselves of a lot of things.
Apenas nos alcanza para una renta módica.
Yeah, we barely have money for a modest ranch.
Ahora le agregamos la preocupación de un desalojo.
Now we are adding to this the concern of being evicted.
Yo les pido que reconsideren.
I ask you to reconsider.
Que no necesitamos desalojos.
We don't need to be evicted.
Lo que necesitamos es que nos den respuestas a nuestras preguntas.
What we need is answers to our questions.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Sir, if you would identify yourself for the record?
My name is Louis Brooks. And I live in Rancho San Pedro for fast with 13 years. And I'm a member of two organizations. So that is for police and sheriff's organization, the private police officers, and also a member of Power. And on September 26th, we went out and had a peaceful demonstration at Mr. Rudy Montiel residence. And on that day, we just voiced, no one was arrested, no crimes were committed. We left peacefully. Someone took my picture, put it in local newspaper. Therefore, Montiel sent me eviction notice. And I think it's unjustified. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Elizabeth Flores? Is Elizabeth Flores still here? And then Karina Torres? Karina Torres? Are you still here, Karina? Come on up. And then Barbara Schultz?
Morning, my name is Elizabeth Flores. I live in Rancho San Pedro. I'm a member of Power and I am a single mother with two kids and I am so worried about all this problem happening in my community because like everybody, I have very, a lot problems to live with my kids and now all this, they are increasing rent and everything. So we just want Mr. Power answer, give us a true answer about how Hackla is going to change this to Section A. We really don't have Section A. We are okay like we are, but they don't want to answer what is going to happen with us. We just asking for they to answer our questions and give us something good for us. Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon to all of you.
Mi nombre es Karina Torres.
My name is Karina Torres.
Soy residente de San Fernando Gardens.
I am a resident of San Fernando Gardens.
Y miembro de Power.
And a member of Power.
Estoy aquí para que, por favor, ustedes me escuchen.
I'm here for you to listen to me.
Porque Hackla no nos escucha.
Because Hackla is not listening to us.
Nos esquiva.
They try to avoid us.
Y no nos pide nuestra opinión como residentes.
And as residents, they don't ask for our opinion. And as residents, they don't ask for our opinion.
Nos intimidan.
They intimidate us.
Nos desalojan.
And they evict us.
No nos escucha.
They don't listen to us.
Queremos una relación con Hackla.
We want to have a relationship with Hackla.
En la cual seamos tratados con respeto y dignidad.
In which they treat us with respect and dignity.
Pelear nuestros derechos no es un crimen.
To fight for our rights is not a crime.
La vivienda pública es un derecho humano.
Public housing is a human right.
Y todos queremos conservar nuestros hogares.
And we all want to preserve our homes.
Y no queremos Section 8.
We don't want Section 8.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Barbara Schultz.
Good afternoon, Barbara Schultz, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. We're all here this afternoon because we have a housing authority that believes it is above the law. It violates the Brown Act with a flawed public hearing process that meant that few tenants have been able to voice their opposition to a plan that privatizes their housing. They then seem to believe that public housing tenants have no First Amendment rights to free speech or free assembly. Hackla's annual plan threatens public housing, but Hackla's attempt to evict these tenants and now filing TROs against them threatens our basic democratic principles of free speech and due process. I urge this council to do whatever it can to bring Hackla into line. Thank you.
Bill Prizlikie, Bill Prizlucky?
Bill Prizlucky, I'm an organizer with Power and I have just one very brief comment. You know, a little while ago, Power had a meeting with Councilman Rosendahl. It was, it had some tension in it, but I think the point that we're trying to make is that this is like if Councilman Rosendahl had somehow tried to file a TRO against every member, every CD 11 resident in that meeting. Mr. Montiel has to understand that he's a government official, he's a public servant. Okay? And so, again, urging the council to do what we can, and we understand that Hackla floats in a weird sort of jurisdictional, unaccountable place. But what we can do, whatever you guys can do to bring these guys into line and make them more accountable to the people, thank you.
Noah Weiss.
This is an example of the council, not as boards of directors of a corporation, but as trustees for the public benefit. If you can't protect the people, the little guy, nobody else can. My suggestion, the city attorney, number one, he ran it as an attorney for the people, the people are hurting in this situation. What we need is, number one, is a mediation. The council should pass a resolution, one, calling for a stop of the evictions. Number two, the imposition of a mediator. And number three, to, you people have subpoena power. You want Montiel here? The president of this city council can issue a subpoena tomorrow. Herb Wesen, out of his committee, can issue a subpoena tomorrow. You subpoena him and you get him here and you get him here now to account and be responsible as a public official. As far as I'm concerned, the city attorney needs to initiate an active investigation against the housing authority and if necessary sue them so that they can basically come into line and do what they need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. We'll now turn to council members who have pressed their buttons. Mr. Alacon is our first speaker.
Councilmembers, as you can see, this is a very disturbing situation. Those of you who have public housing projects know that we work as partners with not only the program, but with the people of these housing programs. And I can tell you that my relationship with San Fernando Gardens is very personal, it extends over the last 30 years. And the, over that time, same residents leadership that I've worked with year after year after year. So it was very troubling to me when, when the president of the residents association in particular was presented with an eviction simply for expressing his constitutional rights. Yes, you know, none of us wants people to come to their homes to protest, but in fact, if they do it in a peaceful way, they should not be subject to the kind of intimidation that has occurred. In fact, when we had our press conference outside, the housing authority had a camera right in front to take a picture of every single person that was at the press conference. It's that kind of big brother mentality that I believe has no place in our housing authority. And so, so Janice Hahn and I have presented this motion, first of all, because we believe that the evictions are incorrect and unjustified based on the information that we've received to date. There, I watched the video of the people at Rudy Montiel's house and while none of us would want people to be knocking on their door and stuff, let me tell you something. I have people visiting my house these days and just to see if I'm there. And I can tell you that, that I, I don't, I don't, you don't see me trying to file restraining orders against people who are knocking on my door. And I have to tell you that, that I think that somebody who makes $450,000 out of the public coffers, who, who has responsibility for managing affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles, should be meeting directly with these people. It's very disturbing to have people come to me and tell me that they've been excluded from a meeting. At the convention center, when they had a meeting, 80 people were excluded from participating in that meeting because they picked one of the smallest rooms in the convention center. These kinds of tactics do not engender the spirit of democracy and that's why we really called for this hearing. So at this time, I'd like to ask the city attorney first to step forward and we'd like the Hackla representatives to also present their side of the story. And frankly, I want to express personally, I'm very disappointed that Mr. Montiel wasn't going to be here. We were told he was going to be here and so for him not to show up at the last minute, I think is, is exactly the kind of disingenuous action that causes this kind of friction in our community. So the first question I have is what is our legal responsibility relative to Hackla? Because I think it needs to be clear, so I'd like to ask the city attorneys who are present to step forward and give us a description of what authorities do we have, what kinds of things can we do and can we do, and what is the responsibility of the city attorney relative to its representation of Hackla?
Neil Blumenkopf, deputy city attorney. Hackla is a separate independent government agency. It's actually considered to be a state agency performing state function. The city attorney serves as general counsel under contract because the state law permits that expressly. The city's role was in adopting a resolution to call it into existence in the first place. And then after that, basically the role is in the mayor appointing the commissioners who are then confirmed by the city council. The city has no other direct role other than is part of the normal zoning, planning and such as when it comes to the developments.
I'll press my button again, but I did want to ask, would it be appropriate for us?
You do have six minutes as the opening speaker.
Oh, okay, then I'll talk for three more minutes. Would it be appropriate, would it be, I don't want to say appropriate, I don't want to get you into an opinion in public here, but would it be consistent with our authority to request an attorney general investigation with the state of California into the actions of Hackla to date? Would there be anything that would infringe on our abilities to do that?
I don't think so.
Okay. And in terms of liability, does the city have any liability for actions of Hackla? No. Okay, so now, in terms of the evictions, these are, these are our constituents, our residents and we want to, we want to protect them. We have a very direct relationship. Our police officers are their police agency since they lost their police agency quite a few years ago in a very disturbing, another very disturbing series of events several years ago. So what can we do to, to protect our residents against what we consider to be an abuse of authority?
I'm not sure how we could, could answer that question, Councilman.
Yeah, and Councilman, we serve as general counsel for the housing authority, so it's kind of difficult for us to propose anything because we defend the housing, housing authority and it's by contract.
Okay, well, then I would like to, I would like to move that the city attorney work with us to draft a letter that would be sent to the attorney general to asking them to investigate the, the actions taken against the tenants at the San Fernando Gardens and Rancho San Pedro housing projects.
The only problem is it'd have to be by a different division of our office because us as representing, you know, we couldn't do that.
That's fine, I'm making the motion anyway, independent of your testimony, but thank you very much. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Yeah, thank you.
Second for Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much and I want to thank Richard Alacon for agreeing to bring this forward today. I want to thank all the residents of our public housing developments who came early this morning. We stood on the steps of City Hall at 9:30 talking about this issue. I know many of you have kids that you're worried about right now, you need to go pick up kids and I appreciate you, you coming here. And I'll tell you colleagues, I am standing with my residents in Rancho San Pedro today. They are my constituents and you know, I have more housing, public housing developments in my council district than anyone else. I've had a long history with the housing authority of Los Angeles. Sometimes it's been good, sometimes it's not been so good. But I will tell you, this particular incident really troubled me greatly. I went and met a couple Saturdays ago at Rancho San Pedro with many of those who then received eviction notices to hear their side of the story. And after I heard their side of the story, you know, I felt that what they did was perfectly within their rights of free speech and protesting. It's not a criminal to be a community activist. It's not, it's not a crime. It's not a crime to want to get the attention of the executive director who really decides sort of who lives and who dies in, in our public housing developments. They had tried many times to get a meeting with Mr. Montiel. They had tried to show up at meetings where he was to talk and he refused to meet with them. My own staff member went to the commission meeting when they were beginning to talk about this disposition and he was not allowed to speak. My own staff member was not allowed to speak at a commission meeting and I sent him there because I was concerned about this disposition plan. I was concerned about this nonprofit low bond and what that meant. I was concerned about the conflict of interest between Rudy Montiel getting funds from the federal government and also getting funds from this nonprofit who now he wants to turn over our public housing to. I think that's, I think that's a conflict of interest. So my question to our city attorneys who are here to defend Hackla is, do you advise them, you know, against these kinds of retaliatory eviction notices? Because it's clear to me, the people that were served eviction notices were the same people that were protesting at his house. Do you tell them, that's probably, you know, not wise to do, we should probably wait to see whether or not any laws were broken? Because as I understand it, the only reason you would evict somebody is if they, if they violated their lease. And violating their lease means they're involved in some unlawful activity. We know for a fact, there was no police report. We know for a fact, no one was arrested. We know for a fact that they were not engaged in unlawful activity. So it seems to me, if you're going to defend them and you're their general counsel, do you advise them, you know, on, on when and how to serve these eviction notices?
Yes, Councilwoman, that's why Joseph Stark, he's the outside counsel that's representing the housing authority on these matters, is present here.
Yeah, but you're the city, you're our city attorney.
Yes, but we oversee, we're only the general counsel.
Well, general counsel gives advice?
Yes, we do participate, but.
Did you, did you participate in the service of these eviction notices?
And after that, Mr. Rosendahl will be our next speaker.
No, that's no.
Did they ask you your advice?
No, as to that, they have an in-house counsel, unlawful detainee attorney that handles that.
But did they ask you, were you involved in any way in these evictions as our city attorney?
Well, see as to that, we can't discuss because of attorney client privilege.
No, no, I'm just asking, our city attorney, I just need to get this answer. You as our city attorney, who is the general counsel to the housing authority, and again, we have very little control over the housing authorities, what we're finding, were you involved in either giving advice or having, you were requested to give counsel on the serving of these eviction notices?
Not as to the particular serving of the commission.
About what constituted, what was the environment from which they were serving these eviction notices?
We have been involved with, with the overall circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, if you can follow that on the next one. Mr. Rosendahl is the only other speaker in the queue, so you'll come right back up. Mr. Rosendahl?
Well, I'm in shock. I'm in shock. Where's Rudy?
Get him here.
Where is he? I will say this, if in fact Rudy took pictures of these people doing their First Amendment rights and that was then sent and they were evicted, he should be fired. I would like Rudy to come before us and answer every question about this. If he didn't do anything like this, obviously he should keep his job. But if in fact, he took pictures and sent it to people and they were evicted on that basis, he's violated the law and he's in trouble. All I want is the facts. I've dealt with Rudy, he's been a great guy. I mean, everything I've dealt with him, my Mar Vista Gardens people, they weren't touched. If they were touched, I'd be out there in the streets with them. You cannot do this. This is a First Amendment issue, if in fact this happened. So I don't know enough to know, but I'm angry right now because of what I've just been brought in to know. I knew nothing about anything until today and saw the discussion here in the council chambers. Could somebody help me get out of my shock and my anger? Please.
Councilman, my name is Joseph.
Your name for the record?
Getting there, Joseph Stark, S.T.A.R.K. I'm outside counsel for the housing authority for Mr. Montiel.
Terrific.
I actually do have a couple of the photographs here with me today to pass around to you. I have a very brief statement that I could give you all of the facts that you need here.
Okay, great.
A group of over 50 individuals, some carrying loudspeakers and bullhorns, were bused to the private residence of Mr. Montiel in September of 2010 on a Sunday afternoon. With only a few exceptions, all of these individuals walked onto Mr. Montiel's lawn, they walked onto his driveway, they surrounded his vehicle and entered onto his private veranda. These individuals cut off any route of escape to Mr. Montiel and his family. Of these individuals.
We can have order in the chamber, please.
If I may have the, if I may have the same courtesy we showed others.
Please, of course.
Of these individuals, approximately nine have been specifically and definitively identified to date as having been part of a mob who rushed the closed gated entry foyer surrounding Mr. Montiel's front door, began pounding on the door and windows of the house, screaming and shouting threats and demands. We have copies for everyone? All right, very good. If anybody would like copies of these, we have them available. At the time of the event, Mr. Montiel was in his home with his wife and his 14-year-old son. The Montiels were prohibited from leaving their residence by this angry mob which remained on the Montiel's property, preventing them from reaching their vehicles or exiting the house. The Montiels were imprisoned by this screaming and shouting mob for fear of their safety and their lives until sufficient numbers of local sheriff deputies could be assembled to safely de-escalate this group. This contingent consisted of nearly 20 deputy sheriffs from the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department and an air unit that they required in order to de-escalate this group. For over an hour, the Montiel family was held captive in their own home, afraid that at any moment this unruly crowd being exorted on by people with bullhorns and loudspeakers would crash through the front doors or windows of their home and attack them in their own Again, Mr. President, if I may ask for the same courtesy we showed.
We can ask, please, for order in the chambers, please. We'll give everybody the same respect whether it's a public speaker or whether it's somebody giving testimony. Thank you.
As for the question of evictions, nine out of however many could possibly have been issued, nine people have been identified as having been directly involved in threatening and harassing and imprisoning Mr. Montiel and his family. Those nine have been served with 30-day notices to quit. Those nine have been served with 30-day notices to quit for violation of specific provisions of the standard lease agreement approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which prohibits both threats against Housing Authority personnel and illegal or criminal activity regardless of arrest or conviction, and it specifically states that in the lease agreement. To date, no evictions have been made, no legal action to evict has been filed, we have served 30-day notices, that is it. Now, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have, but as this matter is obviously in litigation, both from the attack and from the defense standpoint, I am constrained by certain requirements.
If I could just, Mr. President, because...
One more question, then, Ms. Hahn is next, and Mr. Alarcon, if you don't mind pressing it.
Well, I appreciate you giving us this, so in fact, notices were sent out to at least nine of the folks that were demonstrating there, telling them to evict, to leave in 30 days.
Uh, yes, sir, and in fact, there is ample legal authority for the proposition that there is no First Amendment right to enter onto the property of an individual and to force them into hiding in their own home.
Is there no due process for this, where the, where the due process, you know, this could only kick somebody out? Where there, I mean, is there some legal process that people can go through?
Absolutely.
To see if they get thrown out or not?
Absolutely, it's called an unlawful detainer action, which has yet to be filed. If in fact, these individuals wish to voluntarily leave, they may do so. If they wish to contest the matter, they have all the forums in the world. As to the TROs, and I think I should really address that very briefly, the only thing we are attempting to obtain by way of temporary restraining order is to prevent these individuals from entering onto Mr. Montiel's property. They, they can protest anywhere else they wish, they can exercise their First Amendment rights anywhere else they wish to do so, but they cannot come onto Mr. Montiel's property, hold his family hostage, and keep them there for an hour and a half pending the arrival of 20 sheriffs to remove them from his property.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for a second time, and then Mr. Alarcon for a second.
Yeah, thank you, and clearly, Mr. Montiel was scared. I mean, I, I talked to him personally, and he was scared. But what were the actual threats that were voiced? Was there a sign? Was there...
Among other things, and, and this is attached to the temporary restraining order applications, there was a poster being circulated with Mr. Montiel's face on it that said "Wanted." Okay? And, and offered a reward for Mr. Montiel. Now, that combined with the kinds of actions that we are seeing here in these photographs, in the videos of these people storming the front of Mr. Montiel's home, I think legitimately raises some fear in the hearts of Mr. Montiel and his family that they are about to be attacked.
Right, but the law does not say, if you're afraid, the law says you have to be threatened, and you don't have to just feel threatened, you have to actually be threatened.
And these individuals did.
Yeah, and he, he felt threatened, but that's not what the law says. The law says you have to be threatened. And I'm not sure a wanted poster sort of falls in that category, but you're the lawyers, not me. Look, we're all public officials. My brother is mayor, had some pretty gruesome protests in front of his house.
In front of?
Well, they were, they were there, they were on his lawn, they had signs that said, you know, Jimmy Hahn was a puppy killer in front of his kids. But you know what? It's part of what comes with the territory as a public official. And, and, you know, Rudy, and the fact that Rudy and his family were imprisoned in their million-dollar home in Riverside County, I don't know why that is, you know, so terrible to be imprisoned in your own home. It's not like they had him held captive somewhere else. They surrounded a car, but nobody was in that car when they surrounded that car, we could tell that by the pictures. I, I think, colleagues, my problem with this was, it's an overreaction, in my, my opinion. I called Mr. Montiel after I met with the folks at Rancho San Pedro, I said, Rudy, don't serve these eviction notices. Let's sit down, clearly, there is some disconnect. Clearly, the residents feel disenfranchised. Clearly, the residents feel they haven't been treated with respect and dignity. They're trying to get your attention. Why don't you postpone these evictions? Let's sit down, let's bring people together, let's talk about some civil resolution of this. I think what's upsetting to me, colleagues, is he refused to do that. He refused to do that, and his lawyers are so hell-bent on making sure this case is strong so these people will ultimately be evicted. And by the way, once you've served these 30-day notices, even if the Housing Authority wants to drop it, by the way, they charge the residents $200 to drop the case. So once they get in the process, it's not as easy as you might think to get out of it.
Those charges are discretionary.
I think, again, we should rescind these, let's sit at the table, see if we can come up with some solution without people... Look, it's hard enough to live in public housing. It's tough to live in public housing. There's rules, there's regulations, there's leases, there's so much going on, and these are low-income residents in Los Angeles. I think we need to stand up for them. I don't like the fact that we don't have any more authority over housing authority than we do, but I think this was wrong, this was in the wrong direction, it was wrong to do this, and I think we ought to sit down and talk about it.
Thank you. If I may, Ms. Hahn. Respectfully, we have conducted ample research, and there is ample legal authority for the position articulated by the Housing Authority here, which is that this action, which is depicted here, is not a proper exercise of First Amendment rights. It simply is not. It is a violation of the law. It is a trespass, it is false imprisonment, and it is harassment, and those three violations of the law...
And was anybody, was anybody arrested?
It was, as the testimony will eventually establish in the legal matter, Mr. Montiel was asked whether or not he wished to press charges, and he elected not to, so as to allow this matter to de-escalate.
But if it was unlawful, why weren't they arrested?
He was asked whether or not he wished to press charges, and he elected not to.
Thank you.
It was a voluntary election on his part.
Mr. Alarcon.
If a police officer witnesses a crime, they have the powers of arrest. Is that not correct? You said there were 20 police officers present?
I have photos, yes.
And obviously, none of them saw a crime because no arrests were made?
They inquired whether or not Mr. Montiel wished to press charges, and he declined to.
That wasn't my, my, my direction. What I'm asking about is the police officer's action. They don't need Mr. Montiel's permission to arrest somebody should a criminal action be witnessed by a police officer.
This is correct.
So the police officers obviously did not witness any, any illegal activity from their perspective.
I would disagree with your premise, sir. I, I would disagree with that premise because the police officers clearly have the discretion whether or not to arrest someone, as well as Mr. Montiel.
Well, in the, in, the question, the question of what is, what is somebody's rights under our constitutional democracy is one that will be debated through perpetuity. That's, that's, that's our government, that's, that's the way it works, and that's a good thing. I'm just telling my colleagues that I believe this is overstepping. Just as he had the discretion to not make an arrest, he had the discretion not to evict these people. He chose to evict them, which, which is a very heaven-handed process. I, I have personally worked with some of the people that were evicted, at least one that was evicted, the president of the Residents Association, and I absolutely believe that the reason for these evictions has nothing to do with their protest at Mr. Montiel's house, but in fact, because these people disagreed with the policies that were, that were being given to them by the Housing Authority. In other words, it wasn't the, 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 the issue of eviction is more tied to the fact that the people were opposed to the policies that Mr. Montiel was trying to force down their throats. That is what I believe is unconstitutional, that in fact, the process of hearing, in fact, there is, there is an action by legal representation of, of the people relative to Brown Act violations. We haven't even discussed that, but, but there are other issues here that are bigger. And, and, but I just, I just think, is this the kind of operation we want to have in our Public Housing Authority? Do we want this kind of relationship between the administration of the Public Housing Authority and the people that reside in our communities? Let me tell you, when Mr. Montiel came into my office, he showed me a picture and wanted me to name the people in the picture. I mean, has, has anybody ever done that to you in your political work? And let me tell you, colleagues, have you ever had somebody hold up a, a sign that you didn't like, that, that might have said "Wanted" or something else? Come on. In fact, I think, Greg, you held one up on me, didn't you? You know, this is, this is, this is childlike. This is childlike. And, and I cannot believe that, that with people who are in these difficult times, and as hard as it is to find new housing, that, that Mr. Montiel can't step up to the plate and number one, come to this meeting. If he's not coming to our meeting, do you think he respects the tenants in his, in his public housing? That's exactly the point. And I agree, I agree with Mr. Rosenthal. If he doesn't have the courage to come before this council, I don't think he has the leadership ability to run our Public Housing Authority. And so, so regardless of the legal issues, we cannot have a management of our Housing Authority that does not have a positive relationship with its residents. The residents live there. Mr. Montiel should stay out of their homes.
With all due respect...
Thank you. That's all right. May I have one minute to respond? I'm sorry, it was Mr. Alarcon's time, without somebody asking a question, it's the councilmember's time. Anybody else wishing to be, to, to hear? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, I'd like to give you a minute to respond.
Thank you very much. With all due respect, Councilman, it is not Mr. Montiel that is evicting these tenants, it is the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles pursuant to a provision of the lease, which specifically provides that any criminal or illegal activity by a tenant, whether subject of arrest or conviction, regardless of that, is subject to eviction. And that lease term is approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So the evictions, such as they are, are based upon the lease provisions that are approved by HUD. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith? Please, again, it'll be last warning. Mr. Smith?
My motion, what motion? Okay, well, first of all, I understand the reasons for that rule, but it says "are subject to," it doesn't say "shall be evicted," it says "are subject to." That implies there's some thought process. And I haven't seen that. What these folks did were wrong, they're, they should not, they are wrong, and they should apologize. But that doesn't give the Housing Authority, or the general manager, or the authority as an organization, the right to do what you did, and I think it would be in our best interest to instruct the department to stop the evictions pending further legal questions. To Mr. Alarcon, I've served at the police office for 19 years. A police officer is not required to make an arrest if the aggrieved party says, "I don't want to proceed." They did the right thing. But quite frankly, we did the wrong thing. The city did the wrong thing for these people. And Genesis arguments, this is the wrong time and the wrong place to be doing this kind of thing. This is not what the law, the rules that you have in place were designed for. I was there when we designed those rules, for drug dealing going on, for really criminal activities, for gang activities, those are the people we want out of our Housing Authority, not people that are expressing their rights as citizens to be heard on things that they're bothered about. Please don't. And I will say without question, what they did, and what the pictures I've seen, they were absolutely wrong, and they should not be allowed to do that. But the action you've taken goes way beyond what they did, and I think we as a city needed to say no. And I don't know if we have the right in this motion here to just instruct the department to stop and desist on the evictions for now, and have some sort of a public hearing that's a legal public hearing on this issue, rather than this council debate. Mr. City Attorney, do we have that right?
Counsel has the ability to request the authority, but it does not have the legal authority, well, it can instruct, but it will be taken as a, as a request.
Okay. Then I would move that we, that we request with the strongest language possible that they cease and desist these nine evictions.
And I'll second it.
Second. Mr. Labange?
And eliciting a discussion that they also rescind whatever the $200 fee is. So there's no fee, so make that part of the motion.
Without objection. All right, we have that request, that motion before us. Mr. Alarcon, you wanted to hold part of it and move that forward, is that...
Yes, I would like to move that. The other was to, to draft a letter to the Attorney General to ask them to investigate this eviction process. I would, I would like to give Mr. Montiel one more opportunity to come before us, and so I would like to continue this matter and, and make a formal request of the council... Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Send a letter, the request to CISTN DC.
Yeah.
CISTN DC.
For him to comment? Yes, so I'd like to continue, bottom line is, I would like to give, have the opportunity to request that Mr. Montiel be present in this council, and we could do that after the cease and desist request letter is sent. In the meantime, I would like to continue this matter until the cease and desist letter is out.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Second.
Second.
There's a lot of strong, strong language occurring here, but something that really sticks out is the assertion that this is not about they're going to their home, but something else. As a way, in this continuance, to get back on information in the points of disagreement, at least we understand the root of the tension from both those who are feeling their voices are not heard, and plus it gives Mr. Montiel a way in which he could describe his position as an administrator. I think there's the, the substance of, of that engagement is what's missing here. We know the aftereffect, we've, we've seen the drama, but what's causing this? You know, everyone has a different experience with our staff, but I got to tell you, we've had difficult times in need housing, and we cleaned it up, and it was under Mr. Montiel's stewardship. So I'm having a hard time because it breaks my heart to see what's happening to the most vulnerable people in our city, yet we have this environment. So the essence of what Mr. Alarcon made an observation, he said, this is not about the property, the trespassing, this is about going after people because they disagree with him. Okay, what is the disagreement? What is the essence of this discussion? And the essence of this discussion has yet to be addressed. So what are we acting on?
We have someone here to address that.
I mean, I don't know if we have the time now, we wait for the continuance, maybe we wait for the continuance, cooler heads will prevail. But right now, we have a very charged environment, but I need to understand the essence of this discussion, what started this, and doesn't have to be answered today, but that should be part of the continuance, I believe. Can I get a friendly second on that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If, if I may, on, on your time, just explain that, that we really didn't want to get into the policy issues. Quite frankly, I haven't finalized my decision about the policy issues at hand here, because the purpose of this hearing was specifically to deal with the issue of evictions. The policy issue is, is very complex and, and involves federal legislation and all kinds of other issues. You're right, all of us need to consider that policy at some point, but the fact that the, these particular residents, and not all of them agree, but these particular residents oppose the policies that are, that are being presented by Hackla, is, and the fact that they are now being evicted, that is what is most troubling.
Even an executive summary of sorts, just to understand a thumbnail sketch of what is erupting here is, I think, critical to understand the environment.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, and I think that's correct, and, and, and actually, one of our motions was to get a full presentation on what Hackla is actually proposing for our public housing developments, this disposition, this low-mod nonprofit that is going to take over our public housing, and it's going to rely on Section 8, which is, by the way, has not been approved at the federal level yet. So there's a lot, but, but I think, Ed, what you, what you said is exactly right. There is confusion, there is fear, there is anxiety about what this plan is, and it's never been presented to the residents in a, in an honest way. That's what they were seeking, that's what they wanted to have a meeting about, they've been banned from even approaching Mr. Montiel and asking him about this plan. Rancho San Pedro wanted to be excluded from this plan, and that's what I began, I sent my staff member to the commission meeting, which he was not allowed to speak. We want... We wanted -- but again, I was confused. I had anxiety about it, but no one ever -- they have not been able to present to this council, by the way, if this is how we want to go with our public housing. If this is a plan that we agree with, if this is the policy that we want to begin to undertake in all of our public housing in Los Angeles. That's what has not been discussed before this full city council. That's what has not been explained to the majority of the residents who will impact. And that's what this is all about. And I'm glad you brought that up. Nevertheless, I believe we need to end these 30-day eviction notices immediately so we can have a calm discussion about the issues that affect people at their most vulnerable place, which is where they live, with their families, with their kids, and their quality of life. They deserve that. We owe that to them. And that's why we need to stop these evictions today.
Mr. Reyes?
On my time, I'd like to -- sir, I would like to?
Sir? Thank you, Councilman. For the record, my name is Eric Brown. I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Relations for the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. I just want to say that we've had 29 public meetings with the residents. We've educated them. We've gone out to Rancho at the request of the council member to educate them about our plan, about disposition. We've had private meetings with Councilman Alakon. Mr. Montiel had agreed to meet with the Executive Director of Power. We have not yet gotten a response back to that meeting. So it's not that we have not been cooperative. We've met with HCED. We've given our plan to HCED and explained the disposition in our annual plan. So we've done everything that we can possibly to educate the residents and the council members. And so, you know, if you want us to do it again, we're open to do it again. Did we go to Rancho, council member?
Go.
But we went at your request.
I insisted that you went.
We were there.
Well, that's not being cooperative and doing everything you can to educate the residents.
Mr. Montiel himself went to the three locations that were considering disposition, himself with the residents. And I'd like to point out that there are three locations that we're considering disposing in our plan. It's Estrada Courts, Rancho -- I'm not Rancho, I'm sorry, not Rancho, San Fernando Gardens and Pueblo del Rio. And so if you would notice that we don't have very many residents from two of the locations that we are considering disposing. So they're not here today because, you know, we've explained to them. Mr. Montiel has gone out, explained to them. And I don't think there's any concern from them. But we are open to meeting with whoever you all would like for us to meet with to explain our plan to.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon?
We want Rudy. We want Rudy. I would just, I want to reiterate that I did, first of all, I did introduce a motion previously relative to the policy issues. Mr. Reyes seconded that motion. And that is to, for the council to deliberate on the issue of, essentially, the issue of Petra and the requests of the Housing Authority. I personally have not made a final decision about my, although my skepticism is increasing by virtue of the actions that the Housing Authority has taken recently. But I have to tell you, I haven't made a final decision on what I think of Petra. It's a very complicated issue. But it is something that the council should consider. The main point is that to rise to the level of evictions, I think, is completely inappropriate and not in the spirit of the kind of affordable housing programs we want to support. We have worked very hard to have a diverse affordable housing portfolio that is supported by the City of Los Angeles. But when we see tenants who are being evicted, in my estimation, because they disagree with the administration, I think that is extremely troubling, particularly when I know that one of the families involved has been active for 30 years and worked with me when I worked for Mayor Bradley. And now, all of a sudden, they're doing something so egregious that they're being evicted after being in leadership at San Fernando Gardens for 30 years or so. So that is what's troubling here. I have to tell you, the Housing Authority did sit down with me and try to explain the Petra and the other issues of their recommendations. And I'll continue to try and understand it and try to be as fair as I can in consideration of whether I support that policy or not. But that doesn't matter to me relative to this issue. This is completely different. And I believe that the Housing Authority used a far too heavy hand at a minimum. So I think our actions are reasonable. The council president has indicated that he would be happy to sign the letter to request Rudy Montiel's presence at the meeting. And Mr. Smith is agreeing that his motion is a friendly amendment to my motion to ask Mr. Montiel to be present. So the cease and desist is a friendly amendment to that. In addition to that, we will also craft a letter with the city attorney to send to the Attorney General's office. I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration. You know, a lot of times, people in public housing feel like they are the downtrodden who don't have support in city council. I particularly want to commend Mr. Smith for being objective and for truly understanding democracy in this regard. And I think it's evidence that we do care about every one of our constituents and we do want to protect particularly the people at Rancho San Pedro and San Fernando Gardens housing projects.
Ms. Hahn?
Would it be appropriate to also send a letter to the commission notifying them of our actions and our wishes? Because again, this is this group of citizens that are supposed to be there, you know, in a role over the department. So I think our letter should also go to the commission.
Okay. Without objection, we have the motions as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
To five.
And we will send those right away. Thank you very much. We'll keep that.
Fourth whip.
Fourth whip, without objection. I don't think there's any signature, but we'll make sure we get on that. We'll now go to our general public comment. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker. Is Dr. Williams here? Not. Is Catherine Dodge here? Catherine Dodge, going once, going twice. Matt Dowd, who is there and ready, general public comment. After that is David Salzberg.
All right, yes, see, first of all, I've got major problems. You leave, make the public wait for public comment for three or four hours. And your guy, Montiel, what, he's not even here for all these people who waited? You know, this is the kind of thing, see, Tom Labange, he doesn't even listen to public comment, and he should, because I'm the one who beat him. I beat his stupid, dumb permit system that his boy invented, Mark Brown. And we came here so many times to talk about anxiety. What about my anxiety? For all the times I had to come here and tell you to do something about Mark Brown, and it took a federal judge to issue an injunction and knock your stuff out? And then Bill Rosendahl, you know, I see him, I'm fascinated. He's like, look at him jump up over that First Amendment of those guys. One day, one, like a couple of hours for those guys only, and we got hounded off the beach for four years. And where's the jumping up and down over that First Amendment violation? So let me take this opportunity, Channel 35, City of Los Angeles, to issue the May Day Alert. May Day Alert. Kitson, I don't know if you've ever heard of that attorney, Kitson. He's our new attorney now. The May Day guys, yeah, they're like, hell, yeah, let's come on that bus now. Let's get on the Zuma Dog, Matt Dowd, First Amendment, and you're so horrified. We ought to be settled by now. And I could help you with some of these things at the beach. You could have a lottery, as long as you do it the right way. You can do some things, but you know, you thought you were right. You relied on Mark Brown. He needs to be fired. He took you, you know, Michael Hunt's getting a class action lawsuit with like 200, 300 people next over these permits.
Thank you, sir.
And we warned you.
David Salzberg, yes, Mr. Labange?
I believe it was an order to the city council drafted by an earlier city council on this issue here. So I think the public speaker had it wrong. It wasn't my personal order, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, I'm talking. I'm talking. Thank you very much. And if the city attorney would like to brief the Arts Parks Health and Agent Committee, I would welcome that. If Mr. Rosendahl would like to have a briefing on this issue here so that we can get people back to the beach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. David Salzberg is our next speaker.
Hi, my name is David Salzberg. It's nice to meet many of you for the first time. I'm kind of nervous here speaking in this big room with all these people, but I've had some life over the past four and a half years. You might recognize my name in the LA Times or all types of media. I'm a plaintiff on a federal lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles. Oh, we won. So by the way, but the problem is that we spent four and a half years of my life here. By the way, in case you're watching, I'm the political action committee behind Zuma Dog, so I funded and wrote a lot of that. So anyway, it's been a real bitch the past four and a half years, not only because I was told I couldn't amplify and do my performance. I'm a performer. People wonder, well, gee, what do you do? I sing, you know, like, "She came from somewhere back here long ago." That's just for the record to show my performance. I don't have a picture to show you. And then all types of things. And so anyway, I'd like to say that it's all coming down to the fact, I can't wait any longer. I've been permanently diagnosed disabled by your county doctor's prescription medication. I've had terrible episodes. And so, you know, you might have heard of MacArthur Park. To sum it up, I don't have the fight in me anymore. We beat you without attorney. But you might have heard of MacArthur Park, May Day. May Day, melee, well, there was a guy that crafted the lawsuit that he filed against We have to leave right now because we're keeping him waiting. He's waiting to meet us, and then we're going to steal your ass real good because you had, oh, I'm sorry, you had a whole long time to settle this matter. And I think, you know, I want the people at home to realize that the city had plenty of time to settle. This is going to yield tens of millions of dollars now. We've got 12 plaintiffs. It's First Amendment. And a federal judge says even at one time, First Amendment violations are reparable damages. I'm permanently disabled. My mom came out to visit. She wonders what happened to the son she used to know before you're illegal. And by the way, you're in violation of U.S. law. Y'all should check into that little bit. So I'll be rich.
All of their summers is our next speaker. Good afternoon.
It's been an interesting day here at the council, to say the least. We've heard a lot of different things covered. There's been a lot of talk about community. There's been a lot of talk about transition. Appreciate, Councilman Labange said, 20 years ago, somebody used to sit right here and smoke cigarettes. And I thought that was a little bit of an interesting thing because I am a medical cannabis patient. And you guys are going to discuss some medical cannabis things today. I'm not going to go into specifics because I know this is general comment. But we are a community. We are the landscape of Los Angeles as well. You talk about these taco trucks and all of that, and that you said, hey, we must have to compromise because they have become a part of the city landscape. Well, guess what? Medical marijuana has become part of the city landscape as well. Yes, there are many places out there that we don't like to see, you know, with the big green crosses and the big green pot leaves, but it is part of the community of Los Angeles. And this is a transition time. Because in 20 years, you never know. We might be sitting here going, oh, my God, we all sat there and talked to the medical marijuana patients, and now people are able to medicate freely wherever they need to. So let's just keep in mind of all the things that have been discussed today. Tobacco, alcohol, fast food, all of these things pass with yes votes across the board. The medical cannabis community has tried so hard to help you guys, to build a community with you guys, to work with the city. And I really want to help you guys do that because I believe in community. I believe in Los Angeles. And I believe that we can all do something together. But at this point in time, it's been five years, and I'm really, really starting to get saddened by this. Long Beach, Ann Arbor, places in New Jersey, they took three months to get an ordinance into place and have their medical patients taken care of. We're at five years now. Let's start speeding this up a little bit, but at the same time, let's keep in mind that these are patients who do need help. They do need a place to go and get their medication. This isn't just like going out and picking up something at a liquor store because you need it for your religious purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Kramer is our next speaker. After Mr. Kramer is Brennan Thicke.
Hi, thank you. It's been a long wait to get up here. My name is Barry Kramer. I'm a medical marijuana patient here in Los Angeles. I am also a resident of the City of Los Angeles. I am going to address you today about the clock that's continually ticking. In June 7th, the ordinance was started. December 4th or 7th, I think, it is due to, we are all supposed to be in compliance with that, yet there's been a freeze because of the litigation that's going on with our ability to go forward and comply. I think you're going to meet today with your city attorney and discuss the time limit that we're going to have. I think that they want to give us 90 days now to move. In the time that we've waited, our collective has lost the opportunity to procure the space that we were going to move into. So now we need to find a space, renovate it, get all our licenses, have building and inspection come out and see it, all in the space of possibly 90 days. I don't think that's really legitimately possible at all. So I would ask you to stick to what you've got already.
Excuse me, Mr. President. We can take general public comments at this time. Those comments would be better for the actual specific item if we start getting into the litigation and where we are.
Are you dealing with that item today?
Oh, we are, yes.
180 days, yeah?
This is just for general public comment.
Okay, well, that's my general comment. Please, 180 days. Thank you all.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to folks, as the previous speaker did speak about medical marijuana more in a generalized way, so if you want to speak specifically on what's before us, you should wait till the later items. Otherwise, this is for general public comment under the State Brown Act. Brennan Thicke is our next speaker, and then we'll go to Bruce Darian in the Valleys. Mr. Thicke here?
Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Thicke's not here. We'll go out to Van Nuys, Bruce Darian. Ian Van Nuys, do we have anybody there? Nope. All right, Anker Patel then here in Council Chambers. He'll be followed by Robert Sternberg. Good afternoon.
Anker Patel from Chatsworth. I did take public transportation here, orange line to red line. Hackla, huh? That was an interesting one. And again, we support you. It was great to have you guys stand up and rip into these guys. We liked, I liked it at least. I'm pretty sure everyone here, you got a lot of applause. You pandered a little bit, but we understand you're politicians. Following me, Bob Sternberg. He's a small businessman. He started, or he owned a courier service in the San Fernando Valley for 19 years. He's the exact small business person that you're talking about. Right? He employed 20 people, 20 drivers at the peak of his company and additional. And he recently sold his company. And all of his employees, minus one, were picked up by the new owner. So that kind of small business creation and then handing off, he's, I met him at LADWP's Long Range Energy Plan, right, in Woodland Hills. Councilman Zion was there. He gave a nice little talk, talking about using solar and renewable energies in the long-range plan. Another broader concept is your power. You can subpoena this Montiel guy to come here. You can also use the 245, right? I think that's one of the most powerful things in your arsenal, to get oversight and get people to come in. Now, is it, I think it is, right, the 245?
On the Housing Authority, no, unfortunately, there's no 245.
You can't use it on the Housing Authority. But in general, that's one of your more powerful tools. And you can use it, I would suggest you use it for the DWP incentive program for solar. They, again, misappropriate a lot of their budget. Maybe it was for furniture. Maybe it was to cover their own butts. But there is some things going on with the incentive program that we would like you to go into. And the small businesses, like Mr. Sternberg, he has Green Energy Enterprise now. And it would be nice of you to follow up on this incentive program and really pay attention to what the DWP is doing with federally allocated or state allocated money to create small businesses here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Robert Sternberg. After Mr. Sternberg will be Walter Beckel. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Robert Sternberg. I'm a solar consultant at present, and also I would like the council to know that I spent the better part of a year with the Sierra Club Political Committee, attempting to advocate the advance of solar in LA. And on that committee, we endorsed many of the people who are sitting on this council. I bring before you a matter that I consider very grave. On November 2nd, just a bit over a week ago, the DWP Board voted to week ago, the DWP Board voted to reduce the solar incentives for solar PV installations, citing budgetary problems. This action is coincident with the expiration of the federal 1603 grant. So, it's a double whammy that's going to put a great many businesses out. Nearly 200 companies in the DWP territory will be affected, resulting in very likely several hundred people losing their jobs as a result of this, because the rebates, along with the federal subsidies, are simply essential to keep this solar thing going. These rebates and federal subsidies induced a number of people to go into the solar installation business, and many hundreds of people to take installation courses for the purpose of getting jobs. Now, this action by the DWP simply pulls the rug out of under those businesses, and is likely to result in several hundred job losses in the very foreseeable future. Ironically, the incentive reduction, which they claim was to save money, will have the opposite effect. There are two reasons.
Sorry, sir, if you can conclude your sentence. You can finish it. You can finish your sentence, but otherwise, if you'd like to give your testimony to the Attorney-at-House.
Yeah. It will actually end up causing higher expense. And accordingly, I urge this council to invoke 245 to delay this action, subject to further scrutiny.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you for your patience today. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. I mean, good afternoon. I wanted to say something in retrospect about item number 38. This is not actually item number 38. This is something still concerned about the Ford Hotel. See, now, that's what I told you, what's going on. There's a problem here with the Housing Authority. And, you know, we were all evicted out of there, out of the Ford Hotel. And all of us, most of us are paying triple the rent we were paying there. And they, and also the Ford Hotel, the design of the Ford Hotel supposedly is supposed to going to be for helping people who are older, disabled people. And they got rugs and kitchenettes. They're going to light the place on fire within, inside two weeks. We had fires there as it was at the Ford Hotel. So, I don't understand. But this is the kind of thing that's going on. And Mr. Montell's lawyer mentioned something, according to HUD law. I file an appeal with the CRA concerning the calculation of our benefits and other items concerning the guarantee of our rent. And instead of CRA answering the letter, the HUD people pulled the letter, and they answered it. They weren't even supposed to answer it. So, if you people are going to try to do something about Housing Authority, you should ask Mr. Montell's lawyer about what he's saying in HUD. And you should talk to CDD about HUD, and they will tell you, there's a problem over there. The people in HUD don't even know what they're doing half the time. They quote 24 CFR 42, and CFR 42 refers to a Section 813 that hasn't been on the books since 1996. They're using laws that don't exist to calculate things. And something needs to be done about what's going on there.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that is Mario Cervantes.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Arnold Sacks. In case any of you might be interested, on Wednesday, the 17th of November, the Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority will be meeting in the Arcadia City Hall. Also, in case any of you are interested, posted at the County Board of Supervisors was this notice of intention to amend the Conflict of Interest Code of the Exposition Metro Line Construction Authority, posted at the County Board of Supervisors. The reason I bring these up is, A, because although the Gold Line Construction Authority is meeting, back in March, when Metro was doling out funding for projects, they gave $800 million to the Blue Line Construction Authority. Now, I know I've been told that they're the same, but that answers, asks another question of why is the same part of this conversation? Because I know Mr. Rosendahl will say, we couldn't get the Green Line Construction Authority, we didn't need the Green Line Construction Authority, but they had two construction authorities for this extension into the foothills. That being said, what would be the conflict between the Gold Line Construction Authority and the Blue Line Construction Authority? Would they be a conflict amongst themselves? Mr. Reyes sits on the Gold Line Construction Authority. I wonder what they discuss. Where's our money coming from? And to end this conversation, just go off on a tangent, maybe you might have read, I don't know, The Daily Breeze has the headline, "Hospital's Healthcare Prices Jolt Workers." The average price of cost for hospital care for a worker in 2001 was over $4,000. In 2009, it's over $9,000, almost $10,000. What can we pre-tell, get the cost of what it costs for city workers' health, hospital care costs, so the public can find out how the budget is being spent?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mario Cervantes is our last public comment card. Matt? Okay. I think we just had one card on item 34, which we'll take real quick out of order. Mr. Dog? Sorry, I didn't see a card on general public comment. Would you like to come forward before him? If you don't mind, just fill out one more card.
Couple of things. Number one, again, I think the city attorney needs to be instructed by this council to cut all ties with the Housing Authority. They're under contract. Council can order the city attorney, because there's conflicts all over the place with the city attorney, and they're not able to do the job, whether it's pensions, whether it's housing. Now, we have another one. Or we can't do anything on behalf of our constituents, because we represent the Housing Authority. So, you know what? Tell them that they're not going to represent the Housing Authority anymore. You can do that. Please do so. Number two, we need a moratorium on foreclosures, people. It's got to come from the city council. We need a discussion on this. The middle class, where are they? They're leaving. We're exacerbating the rich and the poor gap. Please, start to enter into discussion. We had this discussion before. There has never been a discussion at all, other than Mr. Weezer's great rhetorical question back in '07, April, what is the housing policy of the city, affordable or otherwise? If we had those kinds of discussions and had those kinds of resolutions, then perhaps we'd basically be getting somewhere. Lastly, Mr. Corian's here. I wanted to comment on the ratepayer advocate situation. And obviously, from the basis of all the discussion that we've had today, ratepayer advocate slash inspector general, the proposal to have basically this person appointed by a commission. I think it's undemocratic. I think we have a shot here at really a once-in-a-generational opportunity to have the position elected by the people. That gives it moral authority. It gives it moral legitimacy. Now, what are we afraid of? What are we afraid of in doing that? Because the person who is appointed, their constituents are going to be the appointees. And what we're talking about as far as the public election is concerned, we're talking about openness and transparency. If you have this under the table, you know what's going to happen. Where the same people who were here last Thursday, who were basically out there controlling the things, are going to be controlling it behind closed doors. You've got, if you have faith in the people who elected you, then you've got to have faith in the people basically to do it on behalf of the broader body politic. You've got to really seriously consider this, and at least at a minimum, debate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to item 34. And Zuma Dog, you have one minute left on item 34.
That's you when it caught that, since you weren't here the whole meeting. I was saying to Matt, I'd better maybe get two. Nope, couldn't pull one past you. All right, final maps. So, these are the track maps. I've spoken for four and a half years here about this. And I've been saying, you can't have all these final track maps, because you got too much density with not enough infrastructure. And now, look at the crisis it's caused. So, to recap, don't approve these track maps. In case you haven't heard, you didn't reinvest in DWP, and you got pipes exploding, and transformers popping, and all hell's breaking loose. Also, that you don't have enough money to operate the city. Oh, yeah, and by the way, you don't have enough money to operate the city. So, I don't see why you'd want to build more things, when you can't even remove the trash of the city you have. You can't even have the libraries open. You don't have enough room in the schools. It's a complete budget meltdown. It's worse than anybody's aware of, and you're not even able to have trash removed or anything. And so, you want to make it bigger. I don't understand. So, I'd just like to say that you don't have enough money for social services, libraries, street repairs, trash removal. It's going to be very bad. I don't think we should be building more density. I've already warned you for four and a half years. How'd that turn out, Greg Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Dog. And kind of you to give me credit, but it is our crack clerk who you can't put anything by. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. If we can take up item 32 and 37 together, and we do have cards in the public, so we'll go to those first. And Catherine Dodge is our first speaker. Is Catherine Dodge here? If not, Oliver Summers. After that is William Leahy.
Okay, me again. Hello. So, just want to remind you guys about what 32 is that you guys are talking about. In the city clerk's office, it's basically said that there were management changes at the collectives. I can tell you that my collective was deemed ineligible, because they said that there was a management change. In 2007, you guys asked for the owner of my collective, and that was it. My owner gave him, gave you guys his one name. Then, you guys asked in 2010 for all the owners and managers. Well, the owner is still the same, and I have been a manager at the place since 2007, so they added my name onto the list. But therefore, the city clerk decided that we changed managers, and therefore, my club was ineligible. So, here's the thing. We did not change any managers. We did not add managers. We didn't do anything. We just gave you guys the information you asked for, and therefore, I was deemed ineligible. I have not changed anything. Please look at this setup carefully. The city attorney's office is going to tell you that owners and managers have changed constantly. I can tell you this right now. We have not changed once, and you deemed us ineligible. Please keep that in mind, that there are many, many collectives that are under this 187 list, that you deemed ineligible for management issues, simply because the city clerk had a small, little clerical issue. So, just keep that in mind. That's all I want to say. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Leahy. After that is Don Duncan.
Thank you. My name is William Leahy. I'm also the general manager of the pharmacy, which are collectives in Los Angeles. So, I'm here representing myself and thousands of other patients. I'm here in support of changing the management issue that you currently have, that Corret's Home Amendment is one that will help. But I don't know of any businesses that seem to be required to have the same ownership and same manager all the way through. So, I'm going to leave marijuana for a second, and just talk that this council here has elections coming up, and we are a force. We helped Paul Corret's get elected. We helped Mr. Tretunich get elected. Not necessarily our happiest man, but he was the better of the two candidates. We can help people that will help us. We are helping patients. None of the people that come into our stores don't come in without a doctor's recommendation. So, we don't pick and choose. They choose us. And we need you to support us, help the management get through, get by some of these silly issues. And we will help you help run the city as well, and reelect or elect a people that will help us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Duncan.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Don Duncan, a resident of Los Angeles, and the California Director for Americans for Safe Access. And I'm here today to speak in support of the motion to amend the medical cannabis ordinance to provide eligibility for collectives that have maintained a continuity of management from 2007 up to 2010. This is a sensible step. It's a reasonable step. And I hope that you will vote to support that. In a few moments, you're going to debate that without the benefit of the community input. And I hope as you're doing that, that you'll remember that in 2007, there was really only a request for one name. And so, if you're looking to see if there's been an unreasonable change in management, a ballooning of people and so forth, remember that the 2007 documents cannot be a basis for that decision. And so, we may need to go back and receive new documents from these collectives to determine their eligibility. And please don't be afraid of a little extra paperwork to do this thing right. I certainly do applaud the intent of this council in making amendments, and I hope it's a trend we can look forward to, of making these common sense amendments to the ordinance to make it work for the patients, because that's ultimately our common goal. So, please, if there are issues today about how to word this amendment, let's take the time to get this right, so that we have an amendment that actually accomplishes your goal, and that is to get medicine to patients. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Barry Kramer. After Mr. Kramer is Lenny Fisher.
Hi, thank you. I guess I can speak now about marijuana, medical marijuana. And I just, I have two points that I'd like to make. One would be to second what Don has told you here today. This, we really need you to keep the patients in mind when you go behind closed doors here. We really need you to stay with what you've been telling us for four years, and what we've been trying to follow for four years, which is your instruction on how to run the businesses that we have. We're trying to help our patients. Please help us, help the patients of Los Angeles. And second of all, please do not give us less than 180 days to move and restart these businesses. I don't know how anyone in their right mind could think that a business could close, find a new location, get compliant, get all the licenses that they need, get the city to come out and inspect their place, and then, all within 180 days. It's absolutely, all within 90 days. It's just impossible. So, please don't shorten that time. Just keep it the way that we've agreed. We're working as partners with you. Show that you're working with partners with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. Lenny Fisher is next. After that is Eugene Rome.
I'm not an operator of a collective. I'm here as a patient. And I'm in pain right now, severe pain. I would really appreciate it that when we have these issues regarding medical marijuana patients, that we don't have to sit here all damn day. This is really hard on me. I took public transportation, woke up at 6:30 in the morning to come here. And what time is it now? I'm still here. And I'm in pain. I can't have my medicine right now, because I can't bring it in the building. So, let me get to my main point. The collective that I go to is here today. I've been out of work for over a year now. These people provide me my medicine free, at no charge. And you people are threatening to take them away because of a silly interpretation of an ordinance. I'm asking you to do the right thing today, and fix that problem. And understand and know that as we go forward with this, we're going to have more of these speed bumps along the way. And I would really appreciate it if our city council people would stay on top of it and nip those in the bud before it even gets out of hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eugene Rome is our next speaker. After Mr. Rome, we'll go to Jay Cutie.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Eugene Rome, and I represent the Green Earth Pharmacy. Now, council members Corretts and Hahn accurately noted an ambiguity in the statute. And the statute as it currently reads, it's subject to several different interpretations. And that point is exemplified by the very interpretation given to it by the city clerk. Specifically, in the instructions provided by the city clerk to various collectives attempting to register in 2010, it identified the requirements of the statute as requiring disjunctive elements of ownership and management. Meanwhile, its subsequent interpretation of the statute when disqualifying collectives, it read it in a conjunctive, requiring that the same owners and same managers be identified in the 2010 and 2007 documents. Now, that clearly is a capricious and arbitrary result. And the actual language of those documents was submitted in October 13, 2010, written filing by my office, when this motion was initially calendered for considerations. In essence, the city clerk misinformed the collectives as to requirements of the statute. And whether it did so through deliberate action or negligence, it's immaterial. The point is that the code section is currently ambiguous. And it also, it's contrary to sound business practices, basically where manager is terminated or removed for cause, then the collective is thus punished and disqualified as a result of that. I respectfully submitted that was not intended by the drafters of the statute. The proposed amendment, as drafted by council members Corretts... The proposed amendment, as drafted by council members Corretts and I presume Hahn's office, it corrects that deficiency. And that amendment is equitable. It is rational, and I respectfully submit that it is necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rome. Jay Cutie. After that will be Arnold Sachs.
Respectfully, Council President, I have two cards in for thirty-two and thirty-five. Do you want me to address both of those at the same time, or?
Sure. Why don't we take all the public comment together? Sure. Go ahead. We'll give you four minutes, so two for each.
It won't take that long. Good afternoon, Jay Cutie, Council District Four. I'd like to thank Councilmember Hahn and Corretts for recognizing this problem in the ordinance and bringing it before all of you. And I hope that you will vote yes on this amendment and begin to correct some of the flaws that are in this ordinance. I hope that the dialogue will continue. You have wonderful experts here in the field. We've been doing this for, some of us onwards of a decade, working within medical cannabis laws and with medical cannabis patients. I can say that as the director of a patient advocacy organization, I've received many phone calls in the last several days from patients who are hopeful that this is the beginning of moving in a positive direction toward getting some sane, rational policies here in the city around medical cannabis. Just like you can have a working group around cigarettes, I hope that we'll have a working group again around medical cannabis. And just as taco trucks have been able to self-regulate here in Los Angeles for thirty years, I hope that you will also work with our businesses here in medical cannabis as well. On thirty-seven, what I'd like to say is I've been attending all of the hearings between the city and the collectives in Judge Moore's courtroom. And as you go into private, go into a closed session here with the city attorneys, I think it's important to note a couple things. One of the things that I think has been very misleading is Jane Usher has told Judge Moore that in the sixteen hearings that we've had about the ordinance, no one has come out to speak out against it. The other thing that was mentioned by Steven Blau from the city attorney's office, he kind of denied that Councilmember Zion's motion to regulate storefront medical cannabis dispensaries was ever passed. So maybe you can address some of the academic dishonesty. I think it's more important that our, maybe our city attorney is trying to figure out why missiles are going off on our coast instead of picking on medical cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Our next speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon. These people weren't here for the discussion you had regarding the contract, the request for proposals at the airport. And the reason I bring it up is because part of this ordinance reflects on the change in management. But the request for proposals at the airport, Councilman Zion had some questions because there was stories about Magic Johnson wanting to sell his interests in some other, in some things around the city of L.A. And one of the questions was, he was involved in the awarding of a contract for food service at LAX, but if he sold his interests, would he still be part of the request for proposal? And there was a gentleman from the group that had won, and he came up and said he would be allowed because we have a separate contract as his name would still...
Mr. President, he still hasn't brought this into the discussion regarding medical marijuana. Bring it back, sir.
Attorney, I'm trying to bring up the fact that discussion is here about ownership, and a change of ownership eliminates the people from opening a marijuana clinic. And in this case, at the airport, if there was a change of ownership that was brought up, and that was the question by Mr. Zion, because they have a separate contract with the people who won the award, even if the ownership changed, even if Magic Johnson sold his interests, his name would still appear on the eateries, and there would be no change there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sachs. You can bring it back. This is, that's apples and oranges that you're kind of comparing here, and we do have to, under the Brown Act, talk about what's before. So if you have some comments specifically on the medical marijuana collectives, please let us know.
One case, and not a change of ownership in another case.
They're unrelated, sir, and they're not parallel even in the law. Sorry, sir, do you have anything to say about the medical marijuana collective?
I'd like to finish. Then I also like to know...
Please do. Bring it back. You have one more minute, sir.
Since you used the certain change of ownership as a basis for reducing the number of clinics, what is your plan to reduce the clinics down again? And then you also had an ordinance today regarding secondhand smoke. So my question was, on the side, if somebody lights up a medical marijuana, does that secondhand smoke qualify under the new city ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe it does. Matt Dought, you have a minute left, sir. And David Abassi will be after that.
Yes, thank you. See, but I understand what he's talking about. He's making a great point with that whole thing, and I'll explain it to you so you understand. See, I don't understand how, see, if these people set up their collective, and they've got all these patients, and they've got a loyal collective, just because something happens, let's say something happens in their life with their family and they have to move, what happens to that collective? What, it just gets shut down because there's no original people? See, that doesn't make sense. And he's right about Magic Johnson. If he sells his, it's the same kind of thing. It's not apples and oranges. Now, here's what I want to know too. Why wasn't this in there in the first place? You know, like, these are just dumb things that you forget and leave out, and it's because it's the city of Los Angeles municipal code. And then the next thing is, how come you make all these amendments for all these other people? Why do I have to go to a federal judge and get an injunction? Oh, that's right, because we wanted to beat the whole thing.
David Abassi is our next speaker. After that is Anker Patel.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
My name is David Abassi, and I live in Los Angeles. The voters of California passed Proposition 215 in nineteen ninety-six. Fourteen years ago, medical marijuana became legal. became legal. It says that, in the proposition, it says, quote, "allow safe and affordable distribution," end quote. It's clear what the intention of this proposition was. The opposition, which is the minority, is now on the wrong side of the law. Please, please don't let a change of ownership or management be an excuse to close, disqualify, or eradicate the collectives that came years ago and were established before the moratorium. And all I ask is that you please allow patients access and don't take away our rights. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anker Patel is our next speaker. After that is Carlos Koszuski.
Right, this is a complicated issue. It's nebulous, the ambiguity in the language, all these types of things. How about position papers from each of you guys? I would like to see your maybe one-page position on medical marijuana in general. You could put out whatever you feel like on your websites, you know? Engage this community and other communities with position papers. I haven't seen any of those from anybody. Do you guys put out position papers on specific issues like this? Okay, well, you know, make that stuff available online, and, you know, I like to read it. I mean, I'm on your website all the time, Councilman Smith, and you still don't have your calendar on there. There is no meeting on your website today, you know? I mean, come on. And it's a little bit tangential, but position papers on different issues, I'd like to read up on this. Unfortunately, many people wouldn't. I understand that. But there are those of us who are trying to get engaged, want to hear your opinions on these difficult issues. I haven't made up my mind, right? You know, I would like to hear your opinion, my elected officials, and the other people who make up these important decisions. Just, you know, share your thoughts with us in, on these types of issues with us, and we'd like to feedback and have that sort of discussion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Carlos Koszuski is next. After that is going to be Amanda Brazel.
Thanks, Amanda.
We have a microphone. Hold on one sec. We'll get it for you.
Thanks, officer.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Koszuski. I'm a resident in Los Angeles. I came here to support the medical marijuana behalf of pure life alternative. Maybe because of requests, because they always support me and support other peoples. I have, like, low income, and my question is, why are you guys looking to close the store when they always provide us? And the other people are what they have, they pass, they're like, Carlos, thank you. You fought for me. Now I got my collective. I don't need you to come here asking for me, you know? Like, people, those really support us, is that why you guys chase to close down the stores? So would you think, would you gonna vote, think about the patients who suffer? I've been waiting for a long time here. I've been waiting for four years, and I hope this is the last time I have to come here to speak about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience today as well. And my apologies, is it Brazel?
Brazel.
Brazel, excuse me. Jesus Lozano will follow. Good afternoon. And I was just saying who's coming next, Jesus Lozano. But go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. So thank you, Councilmember Hahn and Corretts for bringing this motion forth. I stand before you today rather disturbed. Over the last number of months, you know, the debate on cannabis has really come to the forefront. And what I've continually seen is people like to joke about it, and ha-ha, funny, funny, but there comes down to, there comes a point where we really need to respect the dignity of people. And I think that there's a reasonable expectation for people to do business in America. I mean, we're a capitalist society. And when people are held to a different standard because it's a substance, if you will, that is stigmatized, I think that that is wrong in democracy. I think there's something wrong with that. And I think it's important that when we look at this ordinance that has been passed, that we look at it with the eyes of reasonability, if I could, I don't know if that's really a word or not, but it should be reasonable, what is expected from the collectives. And management changes happen all the time in business. It is ridiculous to think that just because it's cannabis-related, that that shouldn't be allowed. I just don't understand. And the way that the city attorney has continually attacked medical marijuana in the city of Los Angeles is despicable. It is unacceptable. We are talking about sick people. This gentleman was here all day, waiting to hear on this issue, waiting to have his voice heard. And it is just wrong that he should wait this long. And we're often heard last, and I am just really tired of the discrimination against cannabis, and especially for medical purposes. Patients have no business in the battlefield of the war on drugs, and it just needs to be corrected. And so I ask for your reasonable support of medical cannabis in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus Lozano is our next speaker. After Mr. Lozano will be Wayne Sfinler.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you. Jesus Lozano, eleven fifty-two Iroloa Street, member of the first district. Vote every election. We had a good election. Great. I'm here to thank everybody for going through this. It's been a while. Let's just get it right. I'm just gonna say pretty much what everybody else has said. It's like, that's the part that's hard for me to understand, is a change of ownership or change of management. All businesses go together. There hasn't been one business, even in this great country, that's been the same. Maybe a family-owned business, two hundred years, but other than that, all businesses change management or change ownership. But please, support this. As you can see, it's important to us because we waited here since ten, and we've been here. I know I'm a familiar face now. I've been here a few times, and I thank you for your time. I know there's a lot of issues. You guys did great earlier. Now continue it with this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. We appreciate that. Wayne Sfinler is our final speaker.
Pot. We had Prop nineteen in the most liberal bastion of the state, San Francisco. They didn't carry Prop nineteen. L.A. County, they didn't carry Prop nineteen. Of course, the other counties in the state besides San Francisco and L.A. County overwhelmingly rejected it. Why? Because they don't want the stuff next to their homes, and they don't want the stuff next to their businesses. That's the issue, is the issue of the zoning. We're not against patients. They have these clinics already in West Hollywood. They imported Paul Corretts over there from West Hollywood. He was over there. They got the pot over there. You can give taxicab fare to all the patients, and you can bus them over there, and they can buy their pot, and then they can bring their pot back and then have their pot in their house. I know what illness is. My mother died of cancer. Okay, she didn't use pot, all right? I had members of my family had broken bones and healed up. They didn't use pot. You can't regulate the quality of what you're selling to people, and what you're going to wind up doing is, is that you're going to have bad quality. Somebody's going to get sick, they're going to die, and they're going to sue the city of Los Angeles because they're going to say you need, this is a product, and under product liability law, there is strict liability. And who's going to be strictly liable? The city of Los Angeles is going to be strictly liable because they're taxing it, regulating it against federal law. And you speak of Jane Usher. Jane Usher is the preeminent expert on zoning in the city of Los Angeles. She worked on the many commissions. She quit, and she was ostracized by you. Once Tretunich got elected, she came back and joined his staff at a considerable pay cut. And what she's advising you, you better listen to what she's advising you to do, and you better follow it, and the biggest thing you better do is not tax and not regulate this narcotic substance. Because what you're going to wind up doing is, the Attorney General of the United States will switch hands or switch positions, and they'll start prosecuting as they have before in the past. And you're going to wind up getting a lot of innocent people, like the gentleman in the wheelchair and other people, in a lot of trouble. Where are you guys going to be? Richard Alakarn, he's busy right now with his own trial. You think you're going to come to their defense when they get prosecuted under federal law for taking and growing, storing, and using a controlled substance in violation of federal law, conspiracy to distribute it? How about in the mountains, in the Angeles Forest, and in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, where they're growing it and hiding it and growing it in the fields? And they're making, now what are they doing with it? They're hoping that you will regulate a taxi to a point where the illegal producers can undercut your stated price and increase their supplies. And then there's another thing businesses like to do. They will buy the product illegally for cheaper prices, sell it at the higher prices, claiming they growed it. There is no way you can regulate this. This is ridiculous. In C D three, you got already places opening up called AgroGrow. They're selling the apparatuses that you can grow this stuff in your garage. I mean, what the hell kind of city is this? You have neighboring cities, and West Hollywood apparently has made this work. So let them go over there, but what you're going to wind up doing is, you're going to keep dabbling into this, and then you're going to get the shock of your life when the feds shut it down. People are going to get sick, the quality is unregulated, and then secondhand smoke. You light up a bud, that's secondhand smoke. Does that come under your cigarette ban? Of course it does. So take all this stuff and shut it down now. Thank you.
I'll close our general public comment on this item. I think there's a recommendation and desire to get the legal briefing first, Mr. City Attorney, on that?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody wish to make any comments in open session before that? If not, then we will go into closed session for a briefing on item number thirty-seven. According to California state law, we'll come back into open session if there's any vote that we need to take in public session as well. Thank you again to everybody for their patience today. I know you're here for a long time, and we appreciate your patience. If we can please clear the chambers. Thank you.
...
Welcome back to open session. We are considering item 37. There is no action we need to announce in open session. There was, for the public record, a motion introduced today by Mr. Coretts and Mr. Wesson. That will be referred to both the Public Safety Committee and to the Plum Committee. And there may be other motions introduced today or on Friday that will be public and that folks can read about item 37. 32 is before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on item 32? This is, again, the Coretts' motion. Do you, either of you, want to say anything on that? Or, Mr. Coretts?
I think we would just bring this back on Friday in amended form.
We'll continue that without objection until Friday when we have some more language from the city attorney. All right. So with that, for the public that was just coming in, there's nothing that we did in item 37 that requires any public vote. And 32 has been continued till Friday pending some language from the city attorney's office. There is a motion, I think as folks know, that was introduced, a Coretts/Wesson motion available for the public. That will be referred to Plum and to Public Safety Committees. And there may be more motions introduced either today or Friday that get to the heart of the matter that has been suggested or that has been discussed on item 32 on ownership. So with that, there is no action to take. Let's go to the next order of business, please. Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral. Let's post and refer those, and the desk is clear. All right, Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. LeBange.
Mr. President, I have on my hat a member of Legion 283 in the Palisades, but tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we have to celebrate and honor our veterans who put themselves constantly in harm's way. We're in Iraq and Afghanistan. Many of us were at the service the other day for one of our fallen heroes. Tomorrow morning, if you can, at 8:40, please be at the Veterans Affairs of Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System over there in my district by Brentwood. We're recognizing, obviously, all the veterans. We have the chief head-up of the whole military there, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Admiral Mike Mullin, and Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger has invited me to be there as a veteran from the Vietnam era. Later in the day, if you're on the west side, at 7:30, AMVETS Veterans Day program will be over at AMVETS Post 1085-8 at Culver Boulevard, and we'd like you to come. I'll be saying a few words as well. So let's honor all our veterans tomorrow on Veterans Day. God bless our veterans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange.
I wanted to follow up, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you and Mr. Smith for your services, veterans. The 11th month, the 11th hour, 11th minute of the armistice of the First World War. That being said, tomorrow in the center part of the city, in the Hollywood Hills, at Forest Lawn, there'll be a program, and I ask that everybody consult wherever they are to go out for a Veterans Day program to salute those who have served us as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl?
Transportation Committee will be in 10 minutes, roughly at 3:30, upstairs. Again, I look forward to having a quick meeting, colleagues. I'd like to have you all there for that. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon?
Members, I'd also like to make two announcements relative to veterans. Tomorrow, we will be working with Congressman Berman to have, I believe this is the 5th Annual Veterans Day Parade. It will begin at 11:11. I'm sorry, it's the 7th. Thank you, Becca. The 7th Annual Veterans Day Parade in the northeast San Fernando Valley. It begins at 11:11 a.m., which is the official time to recognize veterans. Admiral Mullins will also be present. In fact, he will be the Grand Marshal and will be present. The opening ceremonies actually begin at 10:30, and the Admiral will be recognized at 9:50 a.m. This will be at Laurel Canyon and San Fernando Mission Boulevard in Mission Hills. And they actually go to Paxton on Laurel Canyon, I believe. It's a very good event, and it's just a tremendous showing of support for our veterans. There are probably more veterans in the parade than people on the route, but that's only because there's a lot of people in the parade. Secondly, on a lighter note, I want to remind veterans that tomorrow, in recognition of their service to this country, it's a small expression of gratitude, but they will not have to pay. If they want to go golf on Veterans Day, veterans will not have to pay the holiday rate and will get the regular rate, which essentially saves them about 18 bucks. So I want to thank my colleagues for supporting that motion.
President, I'd just also like to go along with the discussion here about Admiral Mullin, who happened to have been a resident of the city of Los Angeles and was his wife. So we're very proud of him. I want to invite people in the San Fernando Valley or anywhere that want to come to the 20th Annual Susaco, which is a musical, at the Our Lady of Lourdes Church in Northridge on Reseda Boulevard in Kinsey. It's on Friday and Saturday at 7:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 1:30 p.m. And Susaco is the longest-running community theater in all of the L.A. archdiocese, which is open to the public for actors as well as audiences. So you're welcome to come.
Thank you. And do you know where Admiral Mullin graduated from, Mr. Zine?
Notre Dame High School.
Who else went there, Mr. Zine?
Notre Dame. Went to Notre Dame?
Graduated, Mike Mullin, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, graduated from Notre Dame High School. A proud American. And also remember tomorrow, fly your American flag. It'd be appropriate to fly your American flag in honor of Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Smith, is there anybody we know in Susaco? No executive officer of the city clerk's office, perhaps? There is. We're looking forward to it. What? Zine did claim he graduated. He claimed. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourned motions today? If I could please ask everybody to rise for our adjourned motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you heard about a tragic accident that occurred in my district on Laurel Canyon Boulevard last week when 12-year-old Emily Alaman was walking across the street in a crosswalk with her sister and her 10-year-old sister. They were both struck by a car while in the crosswalk, and sadly, Emily passed away and didn't survive the accident. Her sister Angela regained consciousness, but is still in the hospital, struggling with her injuries, which are very severe. This was an accident that was shocking both to Emily's family and friends and our entire community, and it's really galvanized the community to try to work to make that intersection safer. I know that Mr. Alakon has introduced a motion today dealing with traffic light safety around schools. I've introduced a motion, which Mr. Rosendahl is kind enough to second, to expedite a traffic light at this very intersection where Emily was killed. Emily is survived by many friends at Roy Romer Middle School where she attended in the 7th grade. She was an honor student. Her friends described her as a very bright young lady, who was also known as the Fashion Queen because she reportedly never left the house without making sure that she had matching shoes and purse. She loved to dance. She loved to help other people. And it's very tragic that she was taken from us far too soon, in a split second, the kind of an accident that happens through a moment of inattention that can really devastate lives, hers and all those around her. So I ask that we remember Emily today and that we adjourn this meeting in her honor.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? If not, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk. 3:25, this meeting...